Great. Thanks, everybody, for your patience. As we get back from executive session, our first order of business will be to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance if you're able.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So just to reiterate, this is the school committee meeting for Tuesday, May 27th, and we will start with our consent agenda. There were meeting minutes and budget transfers. Any questions on the consent agenda?
All good.
Motion to approve the consent agenda for May 27th. Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Next up is public comment. A reminder that public comment for any item or topic on or off the agenda is always available near the top of the agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person. Please use public comment even if you refer to something later on the agenda. Virtual public will be available through Zoom. Please raise your hand and you'll be promoted to panelist and unmuted or in-person at the microphone, and please start by introducing yourself and your address. So if we have anyone in the room, please make your way to the microphone.
Hello, everyone. Gloria Miller, 14 Hutchins Way. Nice to see all of you and be back in the school committee room. I try not to do this very often because as a former school committee member, you don't need to hear my two cents on everything, but on this issue, I feel really strongly. So I decided I wanted to come tonight. I also did send you an email. Sorry that it was last minute, but I sent an email this afternoon, and I am commenting on the proposed changes to P 6110 for graduation requirements. I, in addition to being a former school committee member, had three kids go through Westford Public Schools, and they all had really different interests and really different experiences. And in particular, I'm going to share a little bit about my middle one, who was running a very demanding academic schedule, but loved music. And she made it a priority every year in her schedule, and her guidance counselor knew this about her, that she always wanted to make sure that she could be in a full-year orchestra class all throughout high school. And it was challenging some years, and she was always anxious about it. She would put in her class schedule, she would get her schedule back, it would never have the right things in it. She would go into her guidance counselor in a full panic, also a bit of an anxious kid, and her guidance counselor would say, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, we got it," would tear up the schedule, start from scratch, and would make it work. Every year, that guidance counselor worked some kind of magic to fit all the pieces together that she was able to get the classes she wanted and orchestra. Now, to make that work, there were two procedural kind of exceptions flexibility that they had at their disposal. She was able to push gym as a freshman, so she didn't take a gym as a freshman, she took two gyms as a senior. That is no longer an option. Also, in her junior year, she had a large number of full-year classes, AP classes that were full-year, and the only way to make it work again was to waive gym for that year. That used to be an option. Again, it is no longer an option. I understand why both of those mechanisms were taken away because the guidance department at the high school wanted to better align with the state requirement of having a PE every single year. But understand that my daughter had flexibility a decade ago when she went through Westford Academy that current students don't have. If she was going through Westford Academy today, there is no chance that she would have been able to work orchestra into her schedule every single year and take all the academic classes that she felt like she wanted to. She wouldn't have been able to do it. And stepping into that orchestra room was her happy place. I believe in my email to you, I described it as her shoulders would drop. I actually had a phone conversation with her on my way over here, and I told her that, and she said, "Mom, you can't drop your shoulders. You have to have proper playing position. Your shoulders need to be up." And I was like, "Okay, pardon the matter four dear, how would you describe it?" And she said, "The orchestra room was my happy place. Every day, I knew I got to go to my happy place." So I understand the benefits of physical activity. She was also a ballet dancer, on point, physically demanding. She had plenty of physical activity in her schedule. She had other things of wellness, but being in that orchestra room was so important to her, and she never would have fitted in her freshman year schedule under the current policy. So I hope that you take this opportunity to provide that extra release valve, give our freshmen, incoming freshmen, just a little bit more flexibility in their schedule to take advantage of things, especially those incoming freshmen get so excited coming in, and I know I'm over time, you're going to cut me off, but they get so excited coming in because they want to take all these classes they've been hearing about for years, and then they get boxed in. So give them that little extra, little bit of flexibility to make their own choices and guide their own program. It meant the world to my daughter, and I know it would mean the world to future students. So, thank you.
Thanks, Cory.
Thanks, Cory.
Do we have any hands on Zoom?
Not at the moment.
Oh, I do, yeah. I have George. I'm going to promote you to panelist, George, so you can speak. So just give it a second, and it should switch you over.
He's just switching over now.
George, you should be able to speak now if you just unmute.
Hi, this is actually Patty.
Oh!
Apologies, the wrong name is on my Zoom account.
Sorry.
So this is Patty Wong for Birchwood. First, I want to thank you, say thank you to the school committee and the Policy Subcommittee for all the time they spent discussing the graduation policy changes. As a member of the Graduation Requirements Working Group, I'd like to share a few thoughts ahead of tonight's vote. During recent SE meetings, I've heard comments indicating that the working group struggled to reach consensus. That is true to a degree. However, ultimately, we did reach a consensus as reflected by the proposal presented by Principal Tumi in December. The meeting minutes from the group show that the proposal to combine freshman PE and health was supported by Principal Tumi, Lauren Clark, the WA Director of Counseling, and other group members. I think it's important to highlight that WA guidance, who are not tied to a specific academic department, and more importantly, have the most holistic understanding of the student body, supported this policy change because of the flexibility it offered. The flexibility is quite basic. It gives freshmen access to an additional half-year elective, which includes intro level courses like exploring computer science, intro to engineering, principles of marketing, intro to business, intro to movie making, foundations of art, intro to photography, and elements of theater, just to name a few. These are not the high intensity, high-stress classes that you may have been led to believe. They provide early exposure, which matters when exploring interest in high school, especially since many of these are also pre-represent for other courses. As we've seen, Tom created a great chart highlighting the elective opportunities available at each grade. Most of these elective opportunities are available for seniors. However, many college-bound students are expected to narrow their application decisions before the first quarter of their senior year, before it ends. For those that haven't had a recent senior, WA guidance encourages college-bound students to apply early action when possible. Why? Because early action acceptance rates are often higher than regular decision, and early decision, unlike early decision, early action is not binding. So early action applications are actually due on or around November 1st, and the first quarter of the upcoming school year ends on November 5th, which makes freshman, sophomore, and junior year electives even more critical for exploring and identifying interests. And during this critical period, most students have access to only 10 half-year electives. Now, I say most because there is a group of students, however, that is even further limited in their access to electives, and that's 14% of the WA student body who receive special education supports and services. Many have full-year academic support or study skills on their schedule every year. This reduces their access from 10 half-year electives to only four before their senior year. The proposed graduation policy is a step in the right direction for all these students, for these students in particular. I also want to remind you of the historical changes made to the WA policy, PE policy. I appreciate how far we've come with the new WA and WPS administration, but it's important to remember that PE policies went through dramatic changes without school committee or student-parent feedback as far back as 2018. These were not official changes to the graduation policy, but instead were strict policies enforced during course selection. Prior to 2018, students were able to waive or skip PE if they were enrolled in seven, in seven full-year classes that year. This was a very popular option. Without tracking completion of annual PE requirements, waiving PE was actually not a compliant option, and WA administration made the decision to remove that option. Students could, however, still defer or push PE to another semester, and for years, an overwhelming number of students doubled up on PE during their senior year to access half or full-year electives before applying to post-graduation-type programs. This created scheduling challenges, unfortunately, for the PE department. And instead of looking at what was driving all those challenges, without, again, without school committee and student-parent input, WA removed the option to defer PE for sophomores and juniors, further limiting their access to half and full-year electives, beginning with the class of 2025. This, of course, severely impacted enrollment in full-year electives and continues to be a huge challenge for students today. The proposed graduation policy change is a small step towards bringing back access to WA electives across all departments. Lastly, I just want to
Patty.
make sure that the school committee not only considers the comments heard today, but you also recall the passionate comments made in 2023, 2024, and earlier this year by students and parents. I know many of you have not experienced the impact of the 2021 change in PE deferrals because you either have younger students or
Patty, I'm going to have to stop you there.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Is anyone else reading? Oh, yeah, great.
Good evening. I'm back. I didn't plan on speaking this evening, but I wanted to take a couple of minutes. If you see that I'm a little red and stressed out, you probably imagine why, but I actually shouldn't be here right now. I underwent a medical procedure this morning and am on anesthesia, so I brought my chauffeur, who's in the back of the room. My daughter has, had to drive me because one of the things that we do as a department is we show up when it matters. And I do believe that tonight matters, and the vote tonight matters. As I said in my first time up here a few weeks ago, that if you did research on PE and students being active during the school day, you would know that it does help stress, and it also helps to increase test scores, which I am not concerned about. My own children would tell you that, but I know a lot of people here are. One thing I did hear two weeks ago was that someone on the panel was not concerned with academic overload. As a teacher who's in the building, and I witness a pressure cooker every single day for my students, I am concerned with academic overload because even some of those other classes that they may enjoy taking, they have homework. They have stuff that they will do outside of the classroom. They are not going to get that in PE and in health. We are the ones that are concerned with what they're going home to, what they're coming into, and, like I said, we're the ones who are there when the students come talk to us, when the bell rings at 1:55. I know it's been a concern with CPAC as well and IEPs. One of my children is on an IEP and went through Westford Public Schools, and that was the rule, and that's what we did. We knew we may not have one elective that we could take. And you know what? As a parent, we have to teach our kids that sometimes you don't always get what you want in life, and that's okay, too. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room for public comment? Any other hands online?
We're good.
Okay. Great. Thank you, everybody, for speaking tonight. And if you're watching, we are also, if the audio is not great on Zoom, we are also live on YouTube tonight overriding the Select Board livestream. So if that audio is better for you from home, please feel free to switch now that the Zoom portion is done. Okay, we're going to move on to student representatives' updates.
So busy, busy time right now, especially for seniors. We had capstone end Friday, which is very exciting. And then capstone presentations have been going today, and then they will continue tomorrow. It's like the kind of first out of second part of the finals, like
It's our birds.
Yes. It's the first or the second part of like completing capstone. Second part is the exhibition on Friday. It's 10 to 12, and friends and family of students are welcome to kind of come check out all the projects, which is very exciting. And then next week is Senior Week, which is again, like, just crazy, filled with a lot of events. There's Red Sox, we have the mock accident, we have Senior Awards. I know this weekend is the Athletic Boosters Banquet. This Thursday is Senior Scholarship Night. We are kept busy, not, even though not in school. This Friday, there's also the Night of Live Salsa Music, and it's 6:00 to 8:00 instructor-led. I believe it's in the cafeteria. I'm not 100% sure on that. But I know Prof. Dublin, one of the Spanish teachers at school, has been promoting it, and she's mentioned this food, and I know that it'll be a great time. Very exciting. We also have on Saturday the Relay for Life event. That's 6:00 to 11:00 p.m., I believe, on the track. That will be really amazing, too, with plenty of water. And then, just kind of looking ahead, graduation is next Friday. And then for the junior sophomores and freshmen, there are finals starting mid-June. They start on July 13th. Take a break over the weekend, 16 to the 18th.
Great.
Yeah.
Anything to add, Daniel?
So, yeah, last Friday, the 23rd, there was shot masala. I heard it was a great time. There's food, drink, and many performances of dance, of dancing. This Thursday, the 29th, during advisory, there will be elections for just electing their class officers, student council members, student senate, as well as stack for next year. Right after the exhibition for the capstone presentations, the seniors at least, I'm not sure about the underclassmen, but will be receiving our yearbooks, so that's always a great time. And then Monday, June 2nd, there's also the Westford Academy Journal of History event, where essentially students who have excelled in their history classes and have written phenomenal papers, they'll be recognized in which their papers will be actually published in a professional journal, which is, you know, pretty amazing. There's also Bio MCAS, I believe, Wednesday and Thursday of next week.
Yeah, it's June 4th and the 5th.
Yeah, June 4th and 5th. And then lastly, boys and girls lacrosse, boys and girls tennis, as well as boys and girls track and field, all won their DCL championships, which is amazing.
Great. Thank you so much. And updates from administration?
Yes, please join me in recognizing the outstanding work of the Westford Public Schools Music Department. This is the 12th straight year that we've been recognized as a best community for music education by the NAMM Foundation. It recognizes and celebrates the outstanding efforts of the entire Westford Public Schools community who've made music education part of a well-rounded education. Designations are made to districts and schools that demonstrate an exceptionally high commitment to and access to music education. And it's amazing that it's the 12th straight year in a row. So we just want to congratulate and thank all of our phenomenal music educators.
Thanks.
And as Maddie and Daniel were sharing, there's a lot of activities happening district-wide, not just at Westford Academy, straight on from preschool on up. So I will just watch your weekly newsletters because there's just too much to even start to mention. The last time we met, I shared that we went to a job fair, and we were pretty happy that we have yielded two hires from that, both a teacher and an administrative assistant. So we were pretty pleased with that overall, and maybe there'll be more. But this is our hiring season, and, which leads us to the Blanchard Middle School search. As you are aware, Principal Hisslepp has resigned, moving on to a new position, and we'd like to thank the nine people who were part of our search advisory committee. We had 28 applicants, which were, you know, whittled down to five selected candidates to come in last week to meet with us. Two finalists have been chosen to move forward, Mr. Adam Ngano and Mr. Brian Curley. Both individuals will be joining us tomorrow at Blanchard Middle School for an opportunity to meet with staff and with families before the final selection is made. So we certainly welcome your participation as well as the public's.
You said that was 28, and how many applicants, how many came in for interviews?
Five.
Five. Great. Okay, anything else? School committee updates.
Just a reminder, we're over 10.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Lori.
I attended the Westford CAT board meeting on Thursday, May 15th. They're wrapping up their strategic plan overview with Paper Crane, who are consultants, and they've decided to stay in their current location on Groton Road for another lease cycle. Their current lease cycle, their current lease expires 12/31/27, and they'll be there for at least another three to five years after that. It's not financially viable for them to move at this point. Also, they're prioritizing their reporting as Westford's newspaper of choice, podcasting, broadcasting, youth programs, training of the public on the equipment, and fundraising.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to get, jump right into our packed agenda. Thank you, everybody, for your patience, and start with the 2025-2026 field trip proposal from the 2026 class officers. Please come on up to the microphone and introduce yourselves. And we do have your slideshow ready, so we'll put that up.
Beautiful. Thank you so much.
Going to pull up the white chair.
Move these chairs over. There aren't too many.
Thank you. Yeah. Dean Welch is grabbing you some chairs, too.
Just some extra chairs.
Just more chairs.
Oh, beautiful. Thank you. Okay.
Just before they start,
Yes.
I just want to get a little bit of context. So this past fall, Valerie and I met with the class officers because they had some questions and some ideas about a potential class trip, knowing that we had had conversations here at the school committee, and I'd made comments about what, what should a class trip really entail. They asked really thoughtful questions. I think we had a great conversation. They took everything that we said, and they went and they have now created this proposal, which they shared with me maybe a month ago, maybe at this point. And I, I, well, I loved it. So I'll just tell you right off the bat, I did love the trip. And I was just so unbelievably impressed, not surprised, but impressed with how you took everything we had to say, and you're like, "Okay, well, we really believe in this, so we want to make this happen, so let's try to fold all of those concerns into a trip." And so I said, "I really think you need to come and present this to the school committee so that it has this public viewing, but for your information, you're not voting on this tonight." So this is an official, you'll get the slate of field trip proposals, some that you need your, your approval, some don't need your approval. So that, this will come to you with that full
June 9th.
Yes, on June 9th. So you'll, you'll see it again. But I just wanted them to have an opportunity to share it. I knew that, that WA was going to be here tonight doing the, their SIP and handbook, and thought this would be a great night for them to do this. So with that,
Great.
Take it away.
Well, thank you, Dr. G, for such a kind introduction. We really appreciate it. Thank you guys all for having us here tonight. My name is Kate Kelly, and I'm the WA Class of 2026 President, and I'm joined here with our Secretary Joanna, our Treasurer Si, and our Vice President Peter. And we're just really grateful to have this opportunity to give you guys a quick overview of our retreat proposal. And as Peter's going to pass around, and Si's going to pass around right now, we have little packets for you guys, so everything that we'll talk about will be explained in more detail through these packets. But we welcome all questions at the end of the presentation.
Thank you.
And again, we're just very grateful for the opportunity.
And when you're done, you'll chair the meeting, right?
Yeah.
I think you're ready. Awesome.
Okay, so just to get right into it, our why. So specifically, our class, like many other classes, never really had the opportunity to go on an overnight trip, right? Our DC trip was canceled. Obviously, the Disney trip is long gone. And it's always just been sort of in the back of our minds. And about two years ago, we started hearing a vocal population of our students in our class vocalizing how they were interested in this opportunity and having these, having these experiences. And as advocates for our class, we decided to buckle down and do some research onto what this would look like. And so essentially, after looking into it, we came out with the goal of creating a trip that every single student in our class could attend. Because what we realized through doing this research is that not everyone has $1,000 to go to a trip, you know, even if it's just in Orlando. No, not everyone has $3,000 to go to Italy. And while these are incredible experiences that I know so many students that have amazing times on, not everyone has these resources to do that, such things. Additionally, a lot of trips are unable to provide physical accessibility for students in wheelchairs or with other physical accessibility needs. And so we just truly wanted to create a trip that every single student in our class could attend regardless of their interests, regardless of their accessibility needs, and create and foster an environment that all students would feel welcome, sort of as a culmination of our senior year and this time together. And so we believe we've done that through this trip to the Omni. And so just to set the scene with a little bit of details on the outline of our trip, our proposed dates would be May 26th to the 28th of 2026, would be our senior year. Transportation-wise, we would be taking busing to and from the Omni, and we've budgeted in an ADA-compliant bus to the overall ticket price, regardless of if we will need to use it for student needs. Additionally, the cost, we have a baseline cost of $610, which by no means are we saying is cheap, but in comparison to some of these other trips, we're very proud of how low we've been able to get it. And then based on the activities that students choose, which we will get into a little bit later in the presentation, that price could go up to $760. And the activities range from structured to unstructured blocks to really provide an amazing experience and memories for our students in our class. And so we researched probably about a dozen different places in this process. We really, we wanted to find a place that was far enough that it was interesting, but also close enough that it felt safe and secure. And we came across the Omni, and in no better words can I say that this is probably the best place you're going to find for a class trip. It's about two and a half hours north in northern New Hampshire, so it's far enough that it's a little bit exotic for students. They haven't been there before, but at the same time, it's close enough that if you need to drive there, it's not an extraordinary trek that you're going to make. Additionally, it's very secluded and surrounded by beautiful scenic areas and national parks, but at the same time, you sort of have this microcosm of college living on this campus with all these different buildings and the freedom to sort of explore on your own while still being in a safe and surrounded environment. Additionally, there's 24-hour free shuttle service at the Omni to get from place to place, so that ensures all physical accessibility for students. There's also a variety of countless things to do at the Omni. There's pools, there's stables, there's arcades. You name it, they have it, basically. And so we just really thought that the Omni encapsulated everything that we needed for a student-based trip. And additionally, they have experience in talking to their sales associate, they have experience in hosting high school students, so this would be nothing new to them. They have plenty of space and plenty of facilities for us. So we really saw the Omni and found it as a perfect opportunity for our class. And just a quick breakdown of our tentative itinerary, so you guys have an idea. We would leave the morning of the 26th from WA, and we'd arrive mid-morning at the Omni. Everyone would unpack, get their things settled, and then they would go on what we call their first activity, their first choice activity, and they would have lunch with their friends at their choice activity, which we will explain in a second. And then that evening, they will have dinner by themselves. There's about six different onsite restaurants that students can choose from, which again, range in pricing based on what students need and where their needs are. Then the next morning, we'll have a big group buffet breakfast, which is in this gorgeous open-air room. Then that afternoon, students will have their second choice activity, where they'll also have lunch with their friends. And then that evening will culminate in our group last dinner barbecue, we like to call it, which is at the Bretton Woods stable, and it's catered, and we'll talk about that in a minute. And then that last night, or the last day on the 28th, we'll have breakfast again in the morning as a group. Students will slowly and gradually get their bags packed and get back into the buses. Then on our way home, because we can't really pass up the opportunity to see all these amazing scenic areas around us, we plan to stop at one of the many beautiful parks nearby, have an opportunity for students to take photos, and really just soak up that last bit of sunlight of their senior year with all their friends. And then we would arrive home early evening that day on the 28th. And then we would arrive home early evening that day on the twenty-eighth. And so in going into this trip, originally, for a little bit of context, we were going to sort of like an amusement park place. That was our original proposal. And what Dr. Chu had brought up, which we had never even thought of, but was honestly very considerate and we took into account, was the fact that not everyone's gonna enjoy a roller coaster, not everyone's gonna enjoy a hike. Everyone has different interests. And we really wanted to create an opportunity for every single student to feel like they enjoyed themselves on the trip and they weren't just being dragged to activities that they didn't wanna participate in. So we created what's called the Choice System. So we have seven different well-researched activities, which are, again, in detail on your packets. And essentially, how this will work is as students are signing up for the trip, they'll pick their top choices for each of the first and the second day. And then based on first come, first served, they'll be assigned their activity for that day. And then chaperones will be assigned to groups to go on these activities. And it really allows opportunities for students to assess their own personal needs. Like if students feel that they really want to keep this financially accessible to them and they don't wanna be spending any more than the baseline price, they can pick activities that are completely and one-hundred percent free. If students feel that they need physical accessibility and assistance in their activities, there are a variety of options that even like the scenic gondola rides, it's handicap accessible, so you still get to see all these beautiful views, but you have that accessibility for all students. So we feel that these options provide opportunities for every single student to cater and customize a specific trip to their interests. And just to quickly go over the meal plan, all meals are covered in the baseline price of six-ten, so that includes all breakfasts at this very luxurious brunch that they set up. So it's an all-you-can-eat buffet. And we feel that that really will get students off to a good start in their day. And, you know, many students might fill up then and not even need lunch. So that really puts everyone in a good mood at the beginning of the day. And like I said, it's a communal breakfast. And then lunches will be on their own, because students will be at their individual choice activities. And then the first night dinner will be on their own, so students can explore the different restaurants at the Omni. But the last night, like I mentioned, is a big class barbecue, so it's at the Bretton Woods Stable. It has all of these, they'll basically cater a big meal for all of us. We have outdoor and indoor yard games. And it's just really an opportunity for all of our classmates to come together for one final time, get all of these memories and just really enjoy this last night together in this dinner. And just a quick price breakdown. So like I said, the baseline price is six-ten. It can go up to seven sixty based on the activities. And that budget's in for the busing, which includes the ADA transportation, hotel stay, accounting for quad occupancy. Additionally, we accounted for the chaperones that will be on the trip. So obviously, their trip will be paid for through our funds. And lastly, the breakfast and the food will also be in that baseline price. And while we recognize that six-ten is a little bit inexpensive compared to some other trips, it's by no means, like I said, a cheap trip. And so we, as class officers, will be providing one-hundred percent of demonstrated need through our funds that we have raised over the past three years to any student. And that will be assessed similarly to how it was at Disney on a case-by-case basis. And so really just honing back into what I was saying at the beginning, we really just wanted to create a trip that allowed every single student to participate, regardless of who they were, where they're coming from, where they're going. Everyone can just come together for this last trip and really enjoy themselves. And that means we assess the physical accessibility with the ADA compliant busing, the shuttle service, as I mentioned. And additionally, half of the choice activities are handicap accessible. Like I said, the financial accessibility, you can have the baseline price of six-ten and pick completely free activities. And additionally, we will provide demonstrated need. But then also, we have the interest, so students can find their niche in the trip and find ways to customize this trip to their interests and enjoy themselves in the ways that they feel most comfortable. And lastly, like I said, this is like ten years for many people of schooling with each other. And we just feel that this trip would be so special in so many ways and to provide a trip that everyone can go on. Because people are gonna have these amazing experiences when they're going to Italy, when they're going to Japan, when they're going to all these other trips. But one where you can have all four hundred or all, however many of us are interested in going on this trip together, regardless of where they're coming from, would just be so special. And on top of that, we feel that it's a really amazing learning experience and stuff that you can't learn inside of a classroom. It has budgeting, it has time management. You have to learn how to be in a dorm with someone else, how to live with someone else, many experiences that a lot of students in our class have never had. And so we feel that this will allow all students to have this experience. And ultimately, through our research, we believe that at the Omni, there is something for everyone. So thank you, guys, all for your time. Is there any questions that we can address in regards to the presentation?
Blown me away.
Where can I sign up?
Yeah.
Chaperone.
All right, writing the dates down.
Can I ask, have you shared this with the rest of your class? Like how much input have you got from your, from the other students of the Class of Twenty Twenty-Six?
So we, like I said, we started this like two years ago, sort of just as like a dream, really. Just shooting in the dark, like how can we, you know, make this work? We had a trip originally proposed. But we kept it really under wraps because like we weren't really sure how it would go. And we know that it's been, you know, a difficult thing to overcome in the past just with all of the different student needs to meet. So I really don't think anyone in our class knows too much about it. That's kind of like the big reveal at the end of the year.
Well, they do now if they pay attention.
They're clearly all watching tonight.
Yeah, our viewership.
Viewership is through the roof.
Junior class. Yeah, please.
A question on the financials. A very thoughtful presentation and really thoughtful project. I really appreciate how you incorporated choice and really thought about everybody's needs. So that's awesome. I'm just wanting to make sure I understand. So the proposed budget that you have here for a student doesn't include the food that they would have on their own, right? Like the lunches and the dinners?
So we kind of took a plan similar to other trips that we saw. We, for example, my brother, he actually went on the Italy trip. And I talked to him about how they paid for the breakfast and dinner and then the lunch was on their own. And that ties back to the freedom aspect of the trip. So that's basically what we tied into our trip.
I also believe, since it's kind of more of a brunch-style breakfast, it's, you could get like very filled, and some students may not want to have like a full lunch. So this provides them that option to maybe have like a lighter lunch versus someone who might want to eat more. So we just wanna give people that flexibility and give them that decision.
Yeah, for sure.
And just to clarify the specifics, the baseline price does include both breakfasts and the last night dinner. And then the first night dinner and the two lunches are on their own and not included in the pricing.
Okay. Yeah, like somebody to just blag or put in an estimate for them.
Exactly, yeah. We would let students know ahead of time.
Bill, were you gonna say something?
I was just gonna say, for four class officers, the work that you guys did is incredible. And you're also, you're culminating the experience that you've had as a class and as a group, but also looking ahead, too, like excited about a dining hall, excited about rooming together as a quad room. So I think it's incredible. And hats off to you guys for this. This is.
Very powerful. You really considered all the options. Clearly, you had good guidance as well in your conversation.
I don't feel like we should take any credit whatsoever.
They listened and we just said, no, a lot.
I mean, it was a lot, like our original conversation was like a lot of like what-ifs. And to kind of give that, you know, that adult perspective that we have from the committee in like all the things that we worry about or that we hear about field trips. And so it's just so impressive. Like you said it well, that like not surprised, because I was blown away the very first time I met the four of you. They had little folders with all of our names on them and like the handouts. So I'm not surprised, but it's just so, I'm a little speechless. Like you really hit a home run. I think it looks awesome.
And I just think, I mean, you truly have just, you've embraced that goal of, can this be something that everybody could participate in? And every time another question comes up, you look into it and you research that and you say, okay, well, wait a second, is, if there, you're just, you're truly removing all the barriers, which is one of the things we look for, right? You're trying to remove barriers for this trip. It doesn't mean that people necessarily will want to do it, right? Because that, you even just said that. But you've really tried to maximize, could this be possible for anybody in the Class of Twenty-Six, which I think is great.
Thank you.
And can I clarify? You mentioned that there's two teachers advising on this, but is, there would be more chaperones?
Just those two will take all three, four hundred. Or Melanie. Those are the class advisors.
Yeah, okay.
We plan to have a ratio of about twenty students to one chaperone.
Okay.
Don't worry, we will have enough chaperones.
But any committee members can follow the same Cory process. So anything else tonight? I mean, as you heard, the logistics would be that our formal vote would be on June ninth at our next meeting with all of our other field trips. But I just can't say enough how impressive your presentation was, how well-spoken you all are, how thoughtful, just, you're a great testament to what we hope we're instilling with the decisions we make.
Sample of UDL right here, like hitting the benchmarks, inclusivity.
Voice and choice, isn't it?
Thank you very much.
The Omni Resort was actually built with a cruise ship in mind, so that's even more exciting, right? It's like you're going on a big cruise.
A cruise on land.
Yes, a cruise on land, yes. The person who built it. It has a very interesting history. It's one of my favorite places. Yeah, so you can learn a little bit about the history going all the way back to when it was built. It has some very interesting historical events that took place there.
Oh, cool.
Not the Shining, though. Which is one of the things we did talk about.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna channel their execution and bring us back to our agenda.
There you go.
And thank you very much for tonight's presentation. And we'll, you know, follow along for June ninth, please.
Thank you so much for your time.
So moving right along, we'll welcome up the middle school administration to talk about next year's, well, current year's progress and goals for next year's school improvement plans. Can I? And as was mentioned, we also will send our best wishes to Mr. Hisslepp and your next chapter and miss you here in Westford.
I'm gonna miss Westford a lot, too. Nothing but love for Westford. It's been a great place to work and build my career. Very grateful.
I'm glad. So feel free to, I'm sure you have some highlights or would you like to go through the slideshow?
Yeah, sure. This is a tough act to follow, though.
Thanks a lot.
You get to take a little bit of credit, right? They went to middle school, went to high school.
Did you also want us to talk about the handbook or is that separate?
We'll move, we combined them to try to make the agenda flow a little bit better and because the changes felt on the same scale, if that's okay.
So talk about the handbook after this?
Yes, so why don't we focus on school improvement plans? Yep.
All right, great. So we, our goal, our first goal is equitable student outcomes. And the goal itself is members of the Blanchard and Stony Brook Learning Communities will collaborate to increase alignment of the WPS Middle School programming and practices while allowing each school to maintain their unique identity. This is not a new goal. This is something that is ongoing, but we've been changing the strategies within our goal. So the first slide are actually two things that, while they aren't disappearing, they are coming out of the plan because they really are part of our regular practice. The first strategy is having regular administrative meetings with the administration of the two buildings. We really are in very close alignment. And some of the highlights of things that changed and have been progress that we've made, especially in the past year, are things like offerings in our theater programs, general music, the student center, safety training, the yonder pouches, and our completion ceremonies. We've really, those have been some pretty big, big and important accomplishments this year. And the second strategy is related to providing opportunities for collaboration between Blanchard and Stony Brook Communities. This is built into their monthly everything and for some of our teachers, daily everything. But, so it is something that will continue as part of our practice. But we have a lot of professional development that is combined. We had some very significant restorative practices, training last year. And then continuing this year, we've already had one session with, well, two sessions, but one group went through and there'll be some again in June. And we have a lot of PTO and just school-based, you know, with the two schools together events, which have been really fun, especially our volleyball game. We did win. We got it back, we got the trophy back from Blanchard. And our advisory councils have met together a couple of times. And we're trying to do that more and we found that to be incredibly successful. So we expect to continue to do that.
On the next slide, there are two additional strategies under the first goal of equitable student outcomes. The first is a carryover. Both of these are carryover from last year's plan. Continuing to look at the way that we communicate feedback to our students and families. We've been gathering feedback from parents each spring. We did that again this spring to get some feedback on the changes that we've made over the last two years to progress reports and report cards, particularly regarding conduct and effort. And also some of the events that we have for parents to have an opportunity to come in to learn about the school, open house, parent conferences, to continue to look at ways that we can make those better serve our parent community. Next year, we plan to continue by participating in the District Report Card Committee to assess the effectiveness of those documents. The second item is participation in another district initiative, the Equity Audit. And we did meet with a representative earlier this spring from AIR with a rep from our buildings to begin to talk about an action plan specific to Blanchard and Stony Brook, so that work will continue into next year.
Our second goal is a focus of sense of belonging. So members of the Blanchard and Stony Brook Learning Communities will promote a safe school environment where students and staff embrace diversity, feel a strong sense of belonging, and have an equitable opportunity to thrive. The first strategy is something that does continue in our regular practice, but it is something we're gonna take out of the actual plan. And that is really looking at the data. We do that as part of our practice, primarily looking at panorama, trying to use that panorama playbook that we've, you know, we have access to as well. And then just looking at different resources that we can help all of our staff with our, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, just the way that we're helping kids feel like they belong in middle school, which is such an important part of middle school especially. And then the next two strategies will continue. So continued professional learning and learner-centered approaches, really focusing on our UDL framework. That is something that has been a huge focus this year at the district level, but at the middle schools as well. We've done, we've really had some really, really impressive professional development where our teachers were incredibly invested in diving into what does that look like in my classroom, specifically focusing on engagement. And we will continue that, work on that engagement as well, but we'll begin exploring the representation framework of UDL as well with our faculty. And we already have sort of developed some plans for like the long range for our PD from the, you know, from the fall, starting in August, all the way through the last full PD day in May. We've got a framework, very, it's a framework, it's a skeleton at this point. But we've got a good plan, we have, you know, to have that continuity. The third strategy there that will continue, which is the second one that will continue, is supporting community-based, sorry, sorry, community-building activities that celebrate student diversity, voice, and choice. And this is something where we really try to get our students involved in our, in our school community as in active representatives and leaders. Our ADL program through Pride, our student councils are very, very important parts of our, of our programs at our schools and our kids are really invested in. We really see a lot of positives from that. We have, we really try to have community-building assemblies and spirit days, lots of spirit at the middle school level. It's a lot of fun to be at, I think Friday is our school, oh, I can't say what it is. It's a secret one, I can't say that one. Sorry, I almost gave away the big secret. So I will not say that one, but we're having anything but a backpack day in June, which was a huge hit last year. Lots of things like that, lots of fun. And we, you know, continue to focus on Neurodiversity Week and really celebrating that with visuals as well as announcements, with announcements that students participate in as well. Looking at our Project Three Fifty-One, we go back and forth between the two middle schools and then different, different ways that we can really help the community. So looking forward, this does continue. We wanna keep it in our plan, but it is, it is really an important part of how we, how we work with our students. And we're looking for ways to, you know, see if there are ways that we can get our families involved in some of those after-school activities. Some of our SAC members really brought that up as it would be great if we had opportunities for that. So we're gonna explore some ways that we can possibly do that and see what types of things people are interested in doing and helping out with.
On the next slide, there are two more strategies under goal number two, to promote a sense of belonging. Similar to the strategy Allison just described, this one is about celebrating student growth, achievement, leadership, and service. Some of the ways that we do this are Honored Citizens Program at Blanchard, the Panther Card System at Stony Brook, our completion ceremony, our student-led service projects that we recognize and help them coordinate. Again, bringing students to the center, giving them a voice in these activities that they plan. Again, bringing students to the, the center, giving them a voice in, in these activities that they plan and celebrating their success. So this is something that's coming off because it's really just become a part of who we are. It's woven into the fabric of both of the schools at this point and, and very well established. So we'll continue to look at ways to, to do those things. These are just some of the specifics that have, have continued to be in place at both schools. And then, an item that needs to continue is the exploration of the climate roadmap. We've been introducing staff and students when we have the opportunities in age-appropriate ways, identifying where it fits into the curriculum, and looking to continue to educate and empower students to know where they can make a difference around climate action in Westford.
And our third goal is social, emotional, and academic engagement focus. So, members of the Blanchard and Stony Brook learning communities will continue to integrate academic, behavioral, and social, emotional supports and interventions to enhance student engagement and outcomes. So the first strategy is really where we dove into restorative practices over the past year. And it's been, it's been really quite, it's been quite extraordinary, actually. We both participated. It was fantastic. And we will be, our goal is really to really look at ways that we can incorporate restorative circles into our advisories and our regular classroom practices, not just as a, it's not just a restorative conversation, but also as a learning opportunity for students where everyone is really involved. So that is something that will be, we have had a lot of PD on and we will continue to do so. One of the things that is, has been accomplished is really looking at, and we're pulling off our, pulling out, but we are gonna continue, is using these, looking at panorama, you know, panorama surveys, signs of suicide, all of the different types of surveys that we look at. We look at that data all the time. It's really part of our practice, so it doesn't really need to be part of our, our student, our school improvement plan. And then the third strategy is identifying social, emotional, and academic interventions, really with the focus of trying to minimize that, that social, emotional pressure valve that, you know, the stress that we have. And so one of the things we hope that our later start times will help our students. One of the things that we also implemented this year is the use of the yonder pouches, where students really are not as distracted by their phones. We've seen a big difference in the social media stuff that's happening during the day. We don't have that texting happening back and forth. We don't have kids being as distracted in classes, which has been really quite powerful. And the use of the student center really to support all students as a general education support. So that has been really, those have been very, very effective and we, we expect to continue with those and our, our implementation of yonder. I think that has been very successful and going forward, we expect it to continue to be successful.
Just two more items for goal number three, and these are actually just specific to Blanchard. Our student center, we have struggled to gain some momentum over the years with staffing and access to the student center. We've been able to hire a great ESP who, Michaela Dolan, who's done an excellent job. We revised those building-wide practices for communication and access to the student center and it's finally in a really good place. So we hope to see that access continue to expand next year. And then, we were in need of additional staff members to receive safety care training and we were able to train an additional three members, so that item's been accomplished, too.
Thank you. Are you ready for questions?
Yeah, sure.
Any follow-up questions from the committee? Tom?
Just one on the yonder pouches. I see you are looking to do surveys with students' families for the start times. Have you done any surveys similarly with the yonder pouches and the perception of those?
We've done the yonder pouch survey with, with staff. We have not done them with students and families. I would say we certainly can. We hadn't, we hadn't actually thought, we didn't get a lot of feedback beforehand when we implemented it. We expected, as we presented it at the beginning of the year, this is what we're planning on doing and we were ready. Like, all right, what are the questions? And I think we had, I had one. What happens if they lose it? I'm like, oh, that's easy. I can help. So, you know, we haven't really had a lot of questions or concerns raised by that. That doesn't mean we can't survey. I know what students will say, but that's okay. I think that if we really, if we were able to dive deep in, I think that they would say that they are not as distracted. Eighty percent of our staff believe that it's a, and that's combined between the two, between the two schools, say overall, it's been incredibly powerful, positive rather experience for kids. Fifty-two percent say that we should continue. Thirty-two percent said maybe. So we're talking a high, you know, high eighties are saying either maybe or yes. And most of the impact for teachers, they don't see cell phones in the hallways. There's less teacher-student confrontation about phones, so there's not a lot, you don't have to tell them not to have the phones out because kids know the expectation. Students are less distracted in their classes. There's a lot less drama with the phones and the texts and the social media during the school day. You know, so, and thirty-four percent of the staff said there were no negatives at all with any, with the use of the yonder pouch, which is, that's a high number at, when you're talking about possible negatives or something like this.
Thank you.
That's great feedback. Any other questions from the committee?
I think just on your first goal, as a newer middle school parent, I still, still do feel like there are some discrepancies between the two middle schools. So I think while that first one about like community events and parent-home communication, things like that, have made some strides, I assume. I think just keeping mindful of that moving forward, especially with an administration change, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Because those are really important goals that I think are still not a hundred percent where I'd like to see them as a middle school parent.
Mm-hmm.
And so, and I think I've heard that a lot coming into middle school, too, right? That a little bit of inequities between the two schools. So I think just kind of keeping that frame of mind, especially as someone's coming in to backfill the big issues that.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, and, and somebody might also coming in with fresh eyes, see different viewpoints that maybe get missed.
Good point.
Anyone else?
Tim, I was just wondering if you could speak a bit about the Student Support Center and how that's kind of running and what that looks like.
Yeah, so our student center is a space that's kind of separated from the building. It's a little bit more private. When you walk into our main, main entrance, it's sort of down the hallway to the right, and it's a place where students can go to practice coping skills. They can bring schoolwork to work, work on with the help of the ESP who runs it. They can use that space if they're coming back from an extended absence to kind of get caught up and get organized. They can use, they can color, they can practice mindfulness, they can just take a break and check in with the adult in there. It's just designed to be a welcoming, calming space to prepare them to go back to whatever class they're, they're heading to.
And sometimes there's a, there's a, you know, sort of a gradual, gradual release where the ESP will actually go into a classroom as that safe person, as a student is returning into the classroom to feel like, that's my person, or they're here, so I'm okay. Right? Or if I need to go, I just do the high sign and we take a break. So that also is a way to help kids get back into the classroom because that's really our goal, but we wanna make sure that they are, they're feeling comfortable and ready to do so.
Some use the student center for a quick check-in and it's scheduled. Others, you know, will take an item down there that they need to make up, they need to work on because it's a better space for them. So it's very flexible and fluid based on the needs of the individual student.
But it's always staffed. You have that ESP. Is she typically always there or?
For the most part, that's, that's where she's assigned, but with staffing and coverage challenges, we do pull from time to time when there isn't a scheduled student to be in there.
Gotcha.
They usually have a walkie, so we can, we can find them.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Quick thought, going back to the yonder pouches, it might be a really interesting opportunity to partner with Western Academy and look longitudinally at the impact on the kids, or maybe you're already planning this. But Ms. Giselle has had a wonderful panel, you know, the last couple of weeks with students talking about cellphone use at WA and how it impacts their learning. And might be some opportunities for, you know, cross-school collaboration on that.
Sometimes it's more powerful for a middle schooler to hear from a high schooler instead of the adults or the parent. So that could go a long way.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's amazing how many kids, when they forget their pouch, will just come to the office and say, I forgot my pouch. I'm gonna, and then, and they just put the phone down and they write their name on a little thing and put it in a pouch and, you know, and they just come pick it up at the end of the day. So they are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Are there, is there some under the radar stuff? I'm sure there is. It's okay. They're not using the phones in school and for the most part, kids are doing the right thing, which is great. We want them to be owning that as well. And they, I think they understand the importance of it.
And Allison, have we had any more issues? Because I know initially there was some people leaving like school on Friday, forgetting to unlock their pouch. We haven't had any issues of, of that.
That hasn't been an issue, but we always have a, in the outer lobby of our school, we're able to have it there until at least five o'clock or whenever that outer door closes. I think I've seen all year, maybe three kids come in, like all year, like in that, in that late afternoon time to come, to come unlock their pouch.
Mom group chat about, does anyone know how to get into the yonder bag? I was like, I think you can get there until five o'clock. You won. It's on the outside.
It's a little later than five, but we advertise five.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much. I think we'll just take a motion to approve the middle school, school improvement plans.
So moved.
Second.
That was Catherine and Bill. Any final thoughts? All in favor? Great. Thank you so much. Sorry for the flip-flop, unless you wanna speak to the handbook. Does, is everyone okay with that? Maybe if they just preview handbook changes sort of out of order?
Sure.
Okay.
So, in, in the packet, it's called packet, right? Wait, what is it? So there is a memorandum that has the, sort of the changes that, that we're proposing and that we've made in it. What, a lot of grammatical updates, date updates, things like that. There is a modification to the language under the academic intervention section because we, we do not have reading interventionists and math interventionists and those were in there, so we just pulled that. So the language just now includes our academic coaching. Under our academic integrity section on page sixteen, we've added language that we borrowed from the high school about AI, because we are seeing that more and more. We wanna make sure that we at least can speak to it in a way that kids know this is what the expectation is. It's just, it's come up just a little, but nothing bad, just it's really nice for us to be able to at least have language in there so that they understand. And so it just falls underneath that academic integrity piece. Under food services and free and reduced meals and breakfast, we just, we changed the language so it, it actually reflects what we do in school now, where there is no cost for the lunches or, or breakfast. The, and the, and the fact that if there are extras, like next year, there will be a, a little bit of a change in how the cafeteria does extra, extra meals and extra desserts and things. We wanted to reflect that in the handbook going into the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, as well as we borrowed something from the elementary schools as well about, you know, the idea that, about, you know, applying for SNAP if necessary. So that's a resource in the handbook as well, if families are applying or need, need to apply for free and reduced meals and how that does also impact financial needs for other things as well, such as, you know, bus, bus fees and things like that. And then, we liked, we've also borrowed some other things from the elementary schools. They did a really nice job with how they showed the, all of the administration district-wide and what everyone's role is, as well as, as their email addresses and extensions. So that has been added instead of just having sort of a few people. We wanted to make sure we had everybody in there. And then we've also changed how, how the school committee members are listed. So it's, it has everyone's name as well as the email address and then the link to the school committee as well. And today, Kathy forwarded, forwarded us a, an email with some comments about changes, and some of those were edits and have already been made. And some of them are links that, I have to figure out how to make those changes into links because I can't get to the air. Kathy knows what to do, so she's gonna help me with that. I know how to link, but the, I don't know how to get to these links. And then there are some more substantial changes that we will, will need to look at with our, with our school advisory council. It's not really a three o'clock on a, on a Tuesday.
Yeah.
Just one or two people doing it. We wanna make sure that we're looking at all of that, so we will be, we'll be making those changes as well.
Okay, great. Any questions on middle school handbook?
Just a comment, going back to our discussion last week about whether to have this translations page and whatnot, just making sure it's consistent across the district, however we choose to do it, it should be the same and that way there it's, you know.
We did change the elementary.
Okay.
To revert back to this one.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to make sure.
So is ours the same as this one?
Yes. Yep.
Shayna?
The only, well, the update on the school committee list, I think it sounds like you can, no, but I don't love that my name's not in lights or anything on there yet, but, so that was one. But the other thing that I, unless I missed it and I looked through a few times, was I felt like the elementary schools had made an update with a better, clearer, like, home, like, parent-school communication chart that I felt like was missing in the middle school. And I saw that there was some in the Western Academy that was also really nice, so I felt like, and especially again, as a sixth grade parent, and you come in there and all of a sudden, like, all of these things are like taken from you. You don't know how, who to contact and where and when and how. And I feel like we're also trying to empower students in sixth grade to take more ownership of things, too. So I thought having, and maybe if you wanna go and see how the elementary schools did it and then maybe go back to Western Academies and find a happy medium. Felt like it was missing a piece that's like, contact the principal for this, contact the guidance counselor for this. This first line of defense, and I think Western Academy had theirs written out like really well, like first line of defense is to have your student go talk to their advisory. Second line of defense, then a parent to intercede, so you can kind of help give, like nervous new middle school parents. I wouldn't say I'm necessarily one of those, but he, he hasn't ever spoke to me all year, for the record. But like, an idea of when you should interject, like when you wanna empower your student to maybe stand up for themselves first and then what the appropriate channels are if they're having like tween conflicts or if they're having academic issues, like where those first lines of defense are. And I felt like there was like a gap in this communication.
I think it will be an easy slide in because we do that at open house, so we can take what we have and look at what WA and the, and the middle, and the elementary schools have and modify it. That's not a problem at all, yeah.
Great.
One piece that I didn't see that I wonder if we need to think about for both middle school and high school handbooks and just because of the moment that we're in, we, we have policies about visitors. Do we need to think about including policies about, you know, law enforcement or ICE officials that may come, you know, to the school? Do we have those policies? And totally understandable if they're not, things we wanna necessarily advertise, but just something to think about.
That's a good question, and I'm thinking in terms of, I wouldn't necessarily think that we would differentiate it, but it's something we can look at.
That's more of a district, like you shared like the state guidelines in terms of officials that came out from the, from central office, as opposed to specific to each school's handbook.
But it's a, yeah, it's an interesting.
I guess since I blew up the agenda, yeah. Everybody okay with a motion at this point? Okay. Shayna made a motion to approve the middle school handbook. Catherine's seconded it. And all in favor? Thanks for rolling with that. Sorry, great idea. We'll just get that out of the way. Now you guys are free for your night.
Farewell, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll welcome up WA administration for school improvement plan presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Let me actually take that off. That's been up around my neck all day long. It's not needed now. I think you know who I am. So, the, the framework for the Westford Academy School Improvement Plan very much mirrors what the Strategic District Improvement Plan with the, with the four really objectives. Being in my second year as a principal here, and I remember coming to this forum last year. And after going through my school council, going through my faculty, going through my administration, and then coming here to Valerie and said, Dan, there's a lot in there.
Yeah.
So I, I really tried.
I remember.
I tried synthesizing what I wanted to try to do in next year's school improvement plan. So under the first part around ensuring equity in our curriculum and our instruction, the heart of what we do, that one, so much of that speaks to the universal design learning that we've been doing this school year. Some of the, some of the opportunities that have presented themselves along the, along the way were, are some of these vertical ones where our students are the expert learners and they're showing off their robotics and they're working with elementary in the Mandarin classes. And just so many of those wonderful, authentic experiences that happened this year. You know, in addition to that, many of the things that we've done this year around our, our PD with AI and some of our content-specific universal design learning and, and the work that we did there. Next year, on some of the improvement is, it will be a big year for universal design learning for us. That's, when we look at, and Allison talked a little bit about this, the framework of what our PD and our faculty meetings and our department meetings and the actual PD time that we have, a lot of that is gonna be centered around the universal design learning. And, and part of that for us is our, our curriculum. We have a lot of homegrown curriculum documents that we use that now need to be infused with some of that universal design language and frameworks. You know, we have gone into this knowing, but we weren't capable of updating many of these curriculum documents yet because we're still in the learning process, but next year, we'll be able to. That's a, you know, believe it or not, we But next year we'll be able to. That's a, you know, believe it or not, we are five years out from our next NIASC visit and accreditation. And, and for us really to have truly living, breathing curriculum documents, we need to now incorporate some of that universal design learning framework into it. I just got to say a couple of things as far as working with our, our staff on their educator evaluation goals. It is this year, I, I would say the goals in the, in the excellence that I saw directly connected to some of the, the, our, our school improvement plan and the S-DIP and some of the universal design language and the Mass State Frameworks was excellent. So I want to work with more staff on that, provide them some more clear ideas. Cause I get asked all the time, what do you think I should do for a goal? This is my seventh time around, you know, at this point in their career. And I think Allison and I have been talking and planning on some of those UDL goals that we would be using. I'm not going to cover everything in here. I'm going to do my best to get, stick to the highlights. Strategic Objective Two, this one, you know, awesome on the school start times. It was a lot of hard work and I think I got asked that question two years ago in the forum with a parent said, what's the first thing that you would change? I said, school start time. And so in the work of this committee.
We were just waiting for you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, you know, I think we're, we're still going to learn what that looks like, you know, for next year. So I think we're going to have to, you know, people are like, oh, we're going to have a whole new schedule. And basically we're, we're just pushing things back, our, our blocks and our schedules and our lunch. And so we're going to live that next year. I think two to three years out, we are looking at a scheduling something. Okay. But we're not there yet. So for us to do some of those things, we've been talking about, you know, a master calendar that allows for more collaborative planning time, more co-teaching time to, to do the, to co-teaching planning time and department planning time. So there's, there is work that, that's still, like just haven't been able, been able to grab it just yet of what, where that time is. You know, we have done stuff with staff this school year where we have actually reduced the amount of some of the duty time they have, which has been hugely impactful. It's basically less lunch duty at the end of the day. But that gives them more time back into their schedule to release some of that pressure valve. A couple of other things that we continue to do, we're always growing and evolving. We have rolled out more unified sports, you know, the basketball. Last year was unified track. This year was unified basketball. We, we've come so far with best buddies and our unified sports and our Special Olympics. It's, and the school and the community has embraced it. It's been, it's been a wonderful, a wonderful thing to be part of. You know, next year on the lower right-hand quadrant of this goal, objective number two, a big chunk of this plan really revolves around program of studies. I know there's some interest from this school committee, as there is interest from me as well, and how we revise our course selection process that include, that could include how we do our override process or if we don't do override. Some of that work, like we, we got to dive in. And also evaluate weighted GPA and class weights. We have a, a, a massive amount of different types of weights for classes at Westford Academy. And, you know, there are some schools that are unweighted in the area and there are schools that continue to have a, a weighted GPA. And we're going to try to figure out as part of program of studies, it fits right into graduation requirements, all these things that we're trying to do. That is, that's a big part of it. That, that's a, that's a big part of our next year's school improvement plan. If we go to Strategic Objective Three, we've, we've done a lot of work on the graduation requirements and we've presented it here and we'll continue that this evening. If, if something is to change or the policy needs, we will, we will review what it will be. And there's some planning that will need to take place on that in the school improvement plan. We are again looking at our reinventing and revising our advisory program. We've added advisory minis. We've done some of those trial runs. So there's, there's more growth there for us to have those existing advisory teachers in program to have more opportunities to meet with students. We, we opened our Power School Grade Portal this year. That was, that was a big one. So it is open and it gives the staff and the teachers flexible options on, on how they're publishing, what they're publishing. And that's gone well. And we've gone away from the formal progress reports that used to come. And like, it took me a while to get the language right, but it's, you know, grades have been updated, you know, quarter, quarter four grades were updated last week. So the most current grade is in the, in the Power School portal. There are different, certainly different levels of what teachers can publish. And, and I know as a school district improvement plan, that ties right into how we communicate some of our progress and assessments in the report card group that, that we're going to be working on next year. So, you know, we'll continue to do that with the, the district wide report card. And we'll, we'll continue to talk about what we're showing, how we're showing it on some of the progress goals. Okay. And we go to continue on Strategic Objective Three. The Roots Program has been a wonderful, a wonderful thing that we've, that we've been able to accomplish here, the revamped Roots Program. We've done, we in the upcoming District Curriculum Accommodation Plan, we have language around extended time on assessments that will be, has always been a change. It's always been, you have extended time on assessments K to eight, then you get to Westford Academy and it's like, it doesn't exist. It existed. It truly existed in classrooms. Teachers were doing these types of things all the time. So now it'll be part of this district curriculum accommodation plan. We'll have to roll out that whole, you know, new program. There's a lot of work to do around our continued exploration with AI. The students are using it. There's, at the high school level, there's ways to interface how the, the AI from the teacher to the students or how teachers are continuing to use it. We know students are using it. So there's, there's continued more work with that. Our, our community, so then the next goal on the bottom here is we had twenty-five staff members trained in the collaborative problem solving. We had twenty WA staff trained in level one and two restorative practices, practices this year. So we're kind of a year behind the middle schools on, on their rollout of this. And next year we'll have more staff trained at the tier three. So for us, there is a significant use when some of real damage occurs and happens that in a variety of capacities. So we are very much interested in that, that the tier three of doing a restorative circle or meeting. But as a building, just even today, there, there was a, a circle that happened in, in, in one of the programs at the school. So it's, it's, we are building that capacity with the training. We strategically picked of the twenty staff members of the multiple hats that they wear to invite them to that training. And this is just a one. I sent out twenty invites, might have been twenty-two, but I sent out twenty invites and I got twenty yeses from the staff. I'm in. You know, that was, that was a wonderful thing. So we're going to continue to do that. And also, you know, our, our, our guidance and some of our adjustment counselors have developed a wonderful network of some of our town partners and the resources that the town has. We're going to continue to do that. There's, you know, when it's, some help at home might be needed that we can't provide. Now we have a good access of those, of resources to do those things. And then the last one, we, we had wonderful gardens growing this year and it was, it was a huge success with, right in the courtyard, beginning of this school year, we, you know, we used a ton of that produce in, in the cafeteria after it was thoroughly washed and went through that process. We had more tomatoes than we knew what to do with, but there were, there was wonderful things like the students were just curious and interested and volunteered to help during their lunch, you know, pick things and wash things. And they want, it was, it was a genuine interest. So that will, that will continue. You know, being able to offer students a slice of watermelon after school was, was a complete joy in September this year as the seniors are walking out. It was a wonderful thing. And telling them it was grown right by the school, right at the school. We've also done some other things that, you know, we did, almost half of the building have been upgraded in LED lights. That was a capital improvement two years ago that did this year. That, that was a big project. They have wonderful amounts of different settings that we're still figuring out. Because some of them are too bright, but, but they, they are adjustable and we're trying to figure out those pieces. And also, you know, a, a, a big one that was approved at the town meeting was the trustees, trustees field lights. Those things light up the entire, you know, west side of Westford where they are right now. And it's, it really truly is the, the new modern, you know, lights that are way more efficient. There's less light pollution. So like, that was, that was a big one.
And less warm up time, right?
Less warm up time, less.
You don't have to test it on like an hour.
Yeah.
That's great.
So, so we'll continue all those things. And also just trying to build more relationships with the town. The Open Space Recreation Plan, they've reached out to us with some of our student groups. We want to provide them feedback for that. So that's just another town connection that we're trying to establish. And, and something I realized this year is, is that first one is really to, the Westford Climate Roadmap within those particular classes, we need, we need to allocate some time to understand what it is.
Yeah.
And how it directly impacts students. There are, there are classrooms, there's, there are, are Spanish classes that are, that are doing all sorts of climate related action items around the school right now. So it, you know, there are those connections in, in, you know, having the alignment of the school improvement plan, the S-DIP and teacher goals continues to be an excellent practice. Okay. Any questions?
Thank you. Open it up to the committee for questions. Go ahead, Jess.
Question on your vision for the AI training for teachers. So just thinking about, you know, there, there was a recent case about a, a college instructor that got in trouble for, you know, using AI to generate feedback. Like there are some great things that AI can do for our teachers. So have you thought about where the line is between what we want them to replace with AI, what we don't?
Yeah. I would say, that's a good question. It, it's something that we've explored this year, right? I would say the line is, it, it can be very useful for common, common feedback. Okay? And at the end of the day, what we've been stressing with our staff is if, if you approve that feedback, it is your feedback. So that's still in the development. There have been some teachers right out of the gate that have adopted practices to it. And then there are some that have maybe pulled back and some that are trying it. It, it changes by the week. Brisk is a wonderful tool and that every time I look at it, there's a new feature.
Sorry, Don, is that the program you're using?
Yeah, brisk teaching.
So it's an education specific one? Okay.
Yeah. It, it continues to evolve as AI continues to evolve. I think it's, my, my general practice is, my general belief is we're better off understanding it, figure out ways to use it as time-saving opportunities to then spend more time on the direct needs of the students in front of you or, or of the position or the job that you're in.
It's actually brisk. We, we have brisk teaching. The academy started exploring it earlier. They brought the middle schools along. And we've actually, it's something that we looked at some of our technology costs and we've replaced other things with this for next year. And you, by using your westfordk12.us domain, you can add it as a, as a extension to your Google. So you could actually explore what the teachers are, are able to do. Cause I know Jess, that might be something that would be really interesting to kind of look at. And it is, it's designed by teachers for teachers is kind of the whole idea. And we're sort of using it. We're rolling it out, trying to take some of that, you know, take some of the things that might be able to be done more efficiently. If you had an assistant to help you with something, that's kind of where we've been talking with the teachers about the teachers are, are, they're, they're still coming up with the ideas, but if all of a sudden they're able to kind of help, have something that can help them do this in, of, of, some of these administrative tasks in a more efficient way, that'd be helpful. And one of the things that the teachers at the academy have been able to explore is this notion of feedback. And so there's some of them where with, through brisk, if, if a teacher's asking brisk to, to, to explore and provide some feedback, it has to be on a very specific thing. So it might, we'll just give the easiest example, like it just, it could just be grammar feedback, right? And then the idea being is that that will then come to the teacher and the teacher will have to decide whether they agree with that or whether they don't before it ever goes to the student, which is, I think, helpful.
So my, my one caution on AI, and this goes across the board, is needing policies on what is entered into AI. You know, absolutely no private data should be entered into the interface because it will learn. So, you know, if you are looking for, to provide communication back to a parent, you know, remove anything that's identifiable and get your framework. So just, just overall, put it out there.
Any other points from committee members?
I just want, I just want to add something. I really want to speak on the Power School grades. I love that this year. The first half of like my WA experience was, I mean, obviously great, but, you know, I would find myself at times being like, what is my grade? Especially after a particularly low vocab quiz. And, but I wouldn't always want to go up and ask my teacher or it was just the end of the day. And I was just like, I really want to get out of here. And so being able to look on my phone and actually use the app that I have on my phone was just really nice. And I felt like it brought a sense of like elevated responsibility for your grades and not just like, well, I'll see what comes in the email to my parents in like a couple of months. I felt like it kind of held students accountable because there was no reason why you shouldn't be aware of like what your grades are and kind of being able to, if you can go into each class and you can see what assignments the teacher's entered in and what you got, like your score. And sometimes the teachers can leave like comments and stuff. And that, that's really useful, I think, to kind of, especially as you move up through the grades, like junior and senior years, you're starting to gain more independence, starting to get ready for post-secondary education, like college and stuff or whatever. It was really useful to be able to have that information and to use it to benefit and to kind of just be really like, like aware of where you are and what your grades are. Things important. So.
I'll say that's really great.
Feedback, actually. It is.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other committee points? I had one while other people might be thinking. It's, as always, I think next year's work sounds ambitious and I applaud your, your, your list here. There was a couple of things that were mentioned of this current year that I was just hoping you could speak a little bit more about the action items to track and address attendance issues of students. I know it feels like this time last year, chronic absenteeism was on everybody's, you know, words. And I was just wondering, you know, did, did WA discover some silver bullet? You know, you solved all, all of the world's problems, but did, were there some things that you found that was like meaningful progress?
Yes. I would say the most meaningful things that we have done this year are the early action items when students, when they start to show signs of school absenteeism or avoidance. So right out of the gate, letter writing, contacting home, those initial things right out of the gate have proven to be the best.
Okay.
We still have a working draft of when you get in that area of when things are bad, attendance wise, that we're still working through. That has proven to be a little bit, it's, it's a challenge. But all the research that we have found and the actions that we do, it, we start with last year's attendance in August, letter home on students that it might've been chronically absent.
Okay.
And then monitoring the first two weeks of school and the first month of school. And right out of the gate, you know, monitoring the, the, the actual, and those are the first like three steps of our flow chart that I feel like we've nailed down well. It's just that the rest of it is, there's more work to be done.
Okay. Another question from this current year was just, what did I write here? Oh, could you speak to, like I know we heard it from the middle school a little bit, but could you speak to some reflections you might have about how the phone policy has been going?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, this one's interesting. I would say my administration, my school council, many of my colleagues at Dual County League Schools, so the Acton Box Burrows, I would say the experts that I talked to in digital literacy. At the nine through twelve level, there is, in my opinion, a level of independence that they still need to have and they need to learn. Students need to have the opportunities to learn how to have their phone or not have their phone and when is appropriate to put it away. There is, certainly the research that out and away off is excellent, right? But there's, there's still a level of our students' independence that, that I respect. We started the school year with a complete phones out and off during educational time. Right? And as, like most things. Right? And as like most things, there's been a little bit of slip of that towards the end of the year. But the, um, the educators that it's has always been their thing and the ones that have done that in their classroom, that's that's the way they live and it's not an issue. It's, you know, there are times in many of the class settings that, okay, teach, pull out your phone, let's let's do an activity. So there there's still that balance. I'm still in the the camp of, we need to learn how to use it. But you know what? That's something that we'll that we'll continue to reflect upon, um, especially as we get. These some of these incoming freshman classes that have been used to not having access to their phones. So that's something that we're going to keep looking at, like.
Sure.
Like, all that work we just did in middle school, is it thrown out the window?
Yeah.
You know, or it what is the next appropriate step for us?
Okay.
So, so I think there's there's more information to gather on that one.
If I may, I just want to add onto that. I completely agree with you that in the kind of thing, we did a lot of talking about phone stuff with the stack in our meetings and it's been a huge, like. I'm very much torn between it because I see the pros and the cons of of it completely and I've lived it. Um, but I can say kind of to add to like your slippery slope thing at the end of the year, we started in some of my classes, obviously the first few weeks, the teachers were like, yep, phones away, phones away. And it was definitely like cold turkey shock. It was like, okay. But at the end of the year, kids stopped putting their phones in the thing and teachers, obviously, are other things on their mind, but it actually was like. We had learned almost like like kids started realizing like, oh, we don't want to put our phones in the pouches on the door, but we'll still keep them in their bags.
Yeah.
Like one of my classes, and I won't name which class, we started with all our phones, but at the end of the year, like, I think my last day class, there was no phones in the bin, but there were also no phones out. Like people, we had learned that like, okay, if we take them out, they're going to get taken away. But if we leave them in their bag and like, just know that they stay there. It, there was no problem. Um, granted, this was a mostly senior class, so I don't know if we were all just like, let's get through it. But I feel like there was like a learning curve and I feel like as as hard as it was for students, I feel like we've learned and I I feel like that. Kids have learned that if they keep them away, then they won't get taken.
It's like there's an established expectation.
Yeah, like and it's and it's kind of like, I appreciate that because I think it really helped teachers and students alike.
That's awesome. Thank you. Did the did those, did my time buy anybody else a question?
I I actually just wanted to comment, I really enjoyed reading the the SIP. Um, I just felt a lot of the action items for next year are very thoughtful and, um. You you can definitely see that kind of, um, line coming through it of trying to, you know, be aware of mental health, workload. Um, you know, student balance and stuff. So I actually, I I really appreciated it. I thought it was quite, it was a good read. Do you have something?
Motion to approve the SIP? I actually had one more, um, because I my other ones were about like this current year, but I just wanted to circle back to the. Door you sort of creaked open that applies to our later conversation about graduation requirements. So for those of us that don't have a high schooler, can you speak a little bit about like the what what you think some of the impact of. Evaluating the GPA weight might have on student flexibility and student choice? And if there was anything else that you thought ties into that with like the master calendar changes, the course selection, could you just speak a little bit more maybe to that?
Sure, um, so we have a weighted GPA, right? You know, and an AP course is weighted, has more weight than the CP course, uh, college prep course.
Yeah.
Okay, there's there's that spectrum of it. And, um, there is, uh, I would say a lot of discussions around this. Students are concerned about some of their G, not all of them, but GPA drive is a concern of some students and. Um, instead of interest drive, um, so there there is that balance of it of, okay, what? What does a GPA do for us? Like, at the end of the day, what does it really do for us? Yeah, it gives it gives us an idea of, um, a caliber of a student. It definitely helps with school counselors. Like, there are, there are some things. Uh, many colleges recalculate. They just, they just take whatever it is from whatever school and they they come up with their own calculation of what your GPA is.
Right.
Um, so they can compare apples to apples in all these different places.
And there's some courses that don't count towards the overall GPA.
Correct. There are some unweighted courses. Thank you, Chris. There are unweighted course. Um, some of the electives.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, many of the electives are unweighted.
When we were when meeting with both the VPA staff and the the phys ed staff, after we'd sort of talked about this, it came up that there were. Times when there are students who are taking a class because it's a requirement, but it doesn't count towards their GPA and the struggles that. They might have with students there who don't really care about this class because it doesn't count towards their GPA, but they have to take it. And so that. That is, I don't think that's necessarily the case with all of the PE classes, um, but it was with the VPA classes, some of them. And that conversation of if if everything is part of their story. And if everything is equal weight, right, then students might be more apt to take things that they want to take as opposed to, we've talked about chasing a GPA. Because Dan's right, what we know is that colleges change it. It doesn't matter what, because we're, we you'd mentioned it. We have weighted classes. There are other, many other schools that don't have that at all. And so. Colleges are looking at all these different transcripts that come to them and then they then. Put it through their system to determine what it means.
You know, um, colleges, I guess what is the tail wagging the dog often on on some of these conversations? And, um, at the end of the day, if you ask that to a school, a college counselor, they'll tell you, I I want to see the APs, I want to see honors and all those things. And those, yeah, those traditionally carry a more of a weight to them.
Yeah.
Um, but it's it's worth the conversation to figure it out. Will will that? Will there be an element of our students that truly are now exploring things that they're interested in, as instead of always chasing GPA?
Okay. And then this reference to the master, um, calendar and schedule.
Mm-hmm.
Is any of that tying into the work that you had, if the exploration work this year about de-leveling, um, grade nine classes? How does that all fit together?
Um, the master calendar is more of like our WPS master calendar.
Oh, I see, okay.
Um, uh, it finding time within the school day to provide more collaborative planning. It's 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 difficult at Westford Academy, a rotating schedule, different depart, it's it's difficult.
Sure.
So there's, and that's something that has been in many school improvement plans and still something that that we're working on.
Yeah. Doesn't really feel like a one-year cool.
No, it doesn't. It 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 doesn't, but it's something that.
You're taking on a lot again.
But you're getting it started, maybe. Starting the conversation.
Well, I guess related to that, do you just want to share with us, um, what you did find with the exploration of the de-leveling?
Um, we're not ready for it. I would say, uh, the feedback that I received, uh, from my my departments and my colleagues was. Where where is the 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 substantial evidence that leads you in that direction, right? And I feel like that was a valid, a valid, valid conversation we have with a lot of our our faculty and staff, like. I provided one set of reasons why I think it will, right? And it's, um, so I, there's still, there's still work to be done there.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, and and it might not fit us. It it might be, there, there are other models. There are other models. There's, you know, I, there's more co-teaching that could be done.
Right.
You know, there are other models that we that we can explore.
Okay.
I feel like that discussion's going to be a greater district discussion that.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That may come out soon.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, motion, I'm sorry, Shayna had a motion.
Motion to approve the Westford Academy School Improvement Plan.
Thank you.
Second.
Uh, last call, any, okay, all in favor? Everybody unanimous, thank you. Um, WA handbook, welcome up Dean Amanda Welch.
Hello, everybody. How are you?
Who jumped at the chance to focus on the handbook this year.
That's not exactly. But here I am.
Some late night reading. Dan's looking down here.
Okay, so I don't really know how this works. I'm just going to start. If I'm going in the wrong direction, just let me know.
No.
So I think you have everything in front of you digitally. Um, and there were two changes that I'm proposing to you today. The first one is on page twenty-five. We are adding, um, a bullet, um, second from the bottom about the use of the. WA logo, the mascot, or the simulation without administrative permission. Um, we have found that some students were using it for their own personal social media accounts inappropriately. So we thought by putting this in, it would deter, um, the use of the logo inappropriately. Um, the second proposal is, um, a change of the language to the assessment and mid-year final exams. We didn't, we had a protocol in place and we were all following it, but there was nothing written down, kind of laying it out for families and students. So basically, um, what we did was made sure that if a student's absent for the mid-year or final examination for any reason. That, um, student's parent or caregiver would submit written documentation to their student's dean detailing the reason for the absence. And then administration administration would approve it and then basically reach out to teachers and facilitate the make-up date. Students who require extra time on a mid-year or final exam should use the extra time provided provided in schedule on the same day of the regular exam block. If you're not familiar, we kind of have final exam break, final exam make-up time, it'd be a huge block at the end of the day for that. Um, students must remain present during the entire exam block. That stops students from just getting up and leaving in the middle of the exam time. Um, make-up mid-year or final exams taken after the after the teacher's last day of school year will be graded when school reopens in September. We do have students who have planned trips or whatever and the snow days kind of bump that, um, just letting families know your child will take the final, but it will be graded when the. When school recommences in the fall. Um, students who do not fo- uh, follow this protocol basically could receive a zero for the assessment. Not will, just could, depending on each individual basis. And that's on page eighteen. Do you have any questions?
It's pretty self-explanatory.
Um, I did watch the last school school committee with the recommendation of making the digital handbook in different languages. And I did, I saw Valerie at the Blanchard Cat Fair and we kind of chatted about work because what else we could chat about? And I did one sample for you. So the only issue I could see is because the handbook is a PDF file. You can't just click on the PDF file, it's not live. We would have to submit this document as a view-only Google document. And then basically, if you click on it, I did the first one, um, and then if you click on it, it bumps you immediately to a translated copy. Um, in Google Docs to the next language and you can't see it, but it would go, it would just open up in that other language automatically.
Nice.
Um, if that is something we want to move toward, I will do the rest, but I wasn't going to do them all unless you wanted me to.
Smart.
I also saw your your email and I changed all the links and the dates and the addresses and anything else that was a quick change, but. Um, as Tim and Allison said, changes that have a little bit more weight to it, some of the ones that you were suggesting suggesting need to go through the the different committees. So we will take into that account for next year.
Okay, awesome. So just to paraphrase, um, the the idea that we were talking about the translations in a PDF and then Tom and Josh about like a live website. It sounds like maybe an interim move would be to have a Google Doc version of it that has those built-in. Google translate tools that might be a little bit more accessible than a PDF, somebody copying and pasting and whatever, so.
Yeah.
I basically have done the work for them. They don't have the copy and paste it. They just click on the link and the document appears in their, um, native language.
Does anybody have any feedback on that?
I think if, I mean, Tom, I don't know if you.
I think that would be a a great step.
Yeah.
You know, rather than, again, needing to know what section you need to copy and paste into a translator, it just.
Yeah.
That means the Google, um, document would have to stay live and anybody with access would be able to view it, same with the translated page.
Just a view on.
They can only view, they can't edit it, I'm sorry.
Similar to like the, you know, some of the principal newsletters on like a Google Doc and everybody clicks that link and views it, yeah.
I think it's definitely worth trialing and seeing how it goes.
Yeah.
That on the list of to-do's.
Nothing else.
Got time.
Now I wish I did all of them.
It's a proof of concept, so that's a good thing.
I did have just one question, just, I probably been past practice and whatnot, but the, um, you know, the grading. At the commencement of the next school year, like, how does that impact the the students' grade? Is that like a, is it a lower grade and then it's adjusted or like on the report card, touch go up?
It it's different case by case.
Okay.
There's always an element of feedback that I that staff want to give the students. I think students want.
Yeah.
So there's that element of it no matter what, um, but it's 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 a case by case example.
Okay.
Do you mean the grading of the assignment?
Yeah, 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 like, how does that impact their, what they get on their report card, let's say?
I think case by case basis, but essentially I believe their grade would go in as an incomplete, which is like a holding place card. And then coming back, that that would be fixed and then the GPA would be updated.
Okay. Just so everyone is clear exactly how that would impact.
Any other questions on the WA handbook?
I just have two quick things. One, just please consider, and for middle school too, my my feedback is just a new set of eyes. It's one person, one data point, so just, that's all. Um, but also, uh, it seems like there are a few timelines in the, um, WA handbook that depend on progress reports. So if you're not giving progress reports anymore, you might need to update that language.
We do get progress.
Most of the time, I mean, this is the language that we have about, that I had to nail down this year about grades being updated.
Great, thank you. Take a motion to approve the WA handbook?
So moved.
Second. Do you all in favor?
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Great, great. We're going to try to scoot right along to facility rental fees. Jeff Goodwin, our director of facilities, is monitoring the select board agenda for something. He wants to weigh in on there too, so if he jumps off or something, we have Jenny, I was also privy to a lot of the discussions, so.
Oh, we've got Jeff.
Jeff, please just raise it or go dark if you need to switch meetings or whatever. We're we're happy to take second seat.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you letting me tune in remotely tonight, so thank you very much.
Yes, of course. Yep. Um, do you want to dive in?
Uh, sure, thanks. So, um, we're here tonight to talk a little bit about our facility rentals rates, uh, and our fee schedule. Um, at the request of the finance subcommittee a few weeks ago, uh, we were asked to do a little bit of a market analysis to see how our rental rates stack up. Uh, about, uh, you know, in relation to surrounding communities. Um, so myself and, uh, particularly Katie Lemire, I do need to tip my cap to her. She did a lot of great research on this and and, uh. Dug into a lot of, um, rental information from the surrounding towns. It it is difficult to find a direct apples-to-apples comparison between how different towns handle their rental policies. Uh, but what we did find is that, um, we we kind of came in, um, a little on the low side for what we're charging for our spaces. Um, so what we're proposing tonight is an increase for for some of the rental rates. And we we did also make a couple of minor modifications to the rental rate and group, uh, group classification pages. Uh, tonight, so if you want, we can dive right into the fee schedule. And and basically, um, Jenny and Valerie and I met last week just to discuss this real quick.
Oh, he looks frozen.
And I think that, um, gonna have to take a deeper dive into our policy as a whole, um, over the next year or so. We we did learn that a lot of towns have some very robust rental policies and it. It gave us a lot of, a lot to think about to the, to the point where our heads were spinning after a two-hour conversation about this, so. I I think we've got some work to do in the future, but, um, right now, what we're proposing for twenty twenty-six is a is a twenty percent increase. To the current existing fee schedule. So I don't know if you have the graphic of that Excel spreadsheet on the screen there, if you can see what we're looking at, but. As we went through, you know, room by room, uh, it it became increasingly difficult to to really jack the rates on one room higher than we. We would on another room. So what I decided to do is just go with a twenty percent increase across the board. Um, and, you know, even with the twenty percent increase, that still puts us a little below what some of our surrounding towns are charging for these spaces. We obviously didn't want to give any of our current rentals or current renters any sticker shock. We, uh, we've developed some good relationships with the people that are using our spaces. And and like I said, Katie's done a great job navigating and and fostering those relationships, so. We didn't want to come in too heavy-handed and make any major, uh, price upgrades at this point until we have, uh, a more robust policy to back that up in the future. Uh, so right now, we're looking at twenty percent increase across the board on all of our rental spaces. If you look on the right side of that screen, we did add a couple additional notes on there, um, for grass field rentals. for grass field rentals. The district itself has a decent amount of grass field rentals, but those are handled through Jeff Bunyan's group. The only field that WPS Rentals is renting out is the Abbott Football Field on Fisher Way, and we rent that out to the Knights Football Program. So we did, we have been charging them for field lining all along, but basically what we're doing is memorializing how much we are charging for each lining of that field over there at Fisher Way. So if you see that on the right, it's three hundred and seventy-five dollars per lining. I know that sounds expensive, but for the cost of paint and the labor to actually do it, that, that's basically what it adds up to for a field lining. And then the other note that we added over there is just, you know, this, this hasn't come up too many times, but there's been a couple instances where we have a rental in the buildings during the wintertime, and perhaps their rental would influence when we have to go in and do snow removal activities, or even clean up walkways around the building. So we felt like it was necessary to add a note in there that if, if special attention is needed for snow removal during your particular event, that would be billed at, at the hourly rates for the custodians who have to come in and do that work. One of the other changes that we talked about is if you look in the current group classifications, we had Group A, Group B, and Group C. And currently, Group C, under the old policy, was listed as a for-profit group. This creates a little bit of ambiguity and gray area for Katie as she's trying to negotiate the contracts on these rentals. And one thing that we saw in one of our comparing towns is instead of calling it for-profit, they just, they just called it all others. So it's basically, you're either a town event, a nonprofit event, or any other event, whether you're a private function or a for-profit rental, you're all going to be treated the same way under this new proposed policy. And the last changes that we made are regarding the custodial fees. On the rental rates and group classification page, we basically adjusted our custodial fees by five dollars an hour across the board, and that's just really to account for our recently, hopefully tentatively agreed-upon custodial contracts, so we're basically just adjusting the rates, you know, accordingly to what we have adjusted our custodial rates to, so. I believe that's all the changes that we are proposing at the time, at this time.
Yep.
If anyone has any questions, happy to answer.
So just another bit of history is that a lot of this was kind of brand-new in 2022, so we've had about three years with this set of fees. Like I said, the finance subcommittee did touch on this at our last meeting in April, I think, and acknowledged that there was definitely room to adjust. As another reminder, that I don't get sick of saying, but all the maintenance of all of these spaces comes out of our operating budget. So if, if we're undercharging for lining the paint, that's eating into our, our personal, like our WPS operating, sixty-nine million, you know, school budget. So like to Jeff's point, we want to make sure we're, you know, valuing our partnership with organizations, but we can't undercut what it costs for these, for a lot of these services and to just rental, yeah?
All right, this was also something I looked at on the budget task force as well, when I came to school fees, and I believe what I ended up writing in there was that we should revisit looking at a way to help offset maybe some maintenance costs of spaces. So I'm really glad to see, not that maybe A to B was a direct linear line, but it was certainly something that came up in the research that I did on the task force. One question I had was, are these prices now like at cost? Or is there some amount of money that is helping fund like future maintenance out of this? Or is this an at-cost, or these are like break-even numbers?
So if I can, I, I think I may be able to clarify. The, the chart is on top of the maintenance, the staff. So the staff is charged, so we're now paying for the staff appropriately, and then that is on top of, so.
So you're like renting the room?
Yeah.
And then whether or not you're outside of the custodian hours, you might also be paying for the custodian hours.
Yeah, so.
But if it's like a normal, like, you know, the custodian needs to hear until nine p.m.
And the school's already open.
Yeah, then you're just renting the room, depending on where your group falls in the group. I, I don't think we answered your question, but.
Well, in one, I mean, if we go back to the NGFG, right? Which has the, the facility use in there. As we've seen that grow a little bit since we've been having these fees, that's allowed us to address some maintenance, because our maintenance line item is, is underfunded, right? So like we're, so it's not that it's at cost, it's that we're, we've been able to generate some funds with this, and it's helping to offset some of our costs, but no, we're still not at zero.
I mean, it, it can't be, it can't be break-even, because we are, we acknowledge that there are some, you, some organizations that are renting and not paying for anything, right? That we're saying this is a community asset, that you're a town, a town group that can use, you know, this, this building as a community asset.
It is paying, like salary-wise though as well, that was the other thing I remember when we appointed Katie to kind of run admin on it.
Coordinator position.
The coordinator position, that is like absolutely paying for itself, and so that's coming out of the funds generated from that as well.
I think I also wrote in my task force synopsis that it would be great, not necessarily to have like a marketing campaign, but maybe to more broadly kind of advertise, like, hey, don't forget, like, you can come and rent this space, Roden Bush might be full, or you can't find space somewhere else. Maybe it's something that could go in the bulletin, you know, I don't know. Hopefully people are reading that when it comes out every week, but I think we have all this space, and we could use some of that additional revenue and positive ways to offset operating budget. So I think finding ways to kind of like, again, not market or, but promote the ability to utilize the schools, to Girl Scouts, to, you know, other organizations, I think, would be a positive also, not that that's necessarily this exact topic, but.
Any other feedback on the fee schedule?
Jeff, a question for you. With the rejection of the nutting field renovation at Springtown Meeting, have we seen, or do we expect to see, an increase in requests for grass or turf field rentals?
I, I have not, once again, so Jeff Bunyan handles the rentals of the Westford Academy Field, and also the middle school fields at Stony Brook and Blanchard. So if there were any requests for the turf field, that would be, Jeff would be able to answer that question, but I'm not aware of any uptick in that. I know there's been a lot of discussion over recent weeks about legislation, or potential legislation that could affect the turf fields, but Jeff, Jeff would probably be able to answer that better than I could.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, kind of a follow-up to that, is there a reason that those prices were not increased as a part of this? Were those already at market value?
So, so, oh, well, I know grass field, Abbott, and grass field with lights are new line items. But Jeff, do you want to speak to stadium turf field? Just that.
Yeah, so, so really, that's, the stadium turf field is outside of the purview of Westford Public, WPS Rentals. Like Jeff, Jeff Bunyan and the Athletics have their own separate rentals entity that handles the synthetic turf fields. So those really weren't my rates to adjust. Those are, those are on the master spreadsheet, because they're, they're part of what the district charges, but yeah, the stadium and turf field rental costs, those are, those are under Jeff Bunyan's purview.
Any other points? We're not, we're not voting on this tonight, it's the initial discussion, so if anything else comes up, please feel free to put in an email. Anything you want to add, Jenny?
Shayna actually made a great suggestion, if we have some kind of promotion for those rental, actually is helping our, helping us to support a general fund operating budget. For fiscal year twenty-six, we have increased the revolving accounts offset from thirty thousand to fifty thousand dollars. That's additional twenty thousand support for the general fund, especially for last three fiscal year. And the maintenance costs at the utility service have increased significantly, but we have to level funded our general fund's facility budget for three years. So with inflation, and especially town entering into a new contract for fiscal year twenty-five for the utility services, and the town contract with Constellation Company, according to the budget memo we received from the town, the total electricity contract price increased about forty percent. Foreigner, natural gas, we use that to heat off our school building. The total contract price increased seventy percent. So the proposed twenty percent increase actually is much lower than the percentage increase for our utility service. We are not even talking about those maintenance costs for like a gas for the mowing, fertilizer for the gas field, for the grass field, like fertilizer, the lining paint, also something as well as the heating costs for our rebuilding, like Genesian, Auditorium, all those maintenance costs, we have to consider about for our general fund. Those are all adding pressure to the operating budget. If we can pay more revenue from those facility rental account, it's going to help us to offset our operating expenditure, especially with the increase for maintenance costs.
Yep.
I, I would also say if we could look into, and maybe this is, if something is already done and not possible, the, the way that the policy is now, you have to have like an insurance binder in order to be able to rent, which doesn't allow, let's say I want to have a birthday party, and I need a gym, and I want to play dodgeball, and I want to do this. Like as a private citizen, I couldn't rent it? So would there be a way to have like a waiver policy or something where every child that's present, like if you go to Trampoline Park, right, and you sign your life away, that if something happens to your kid there, is there something we could even look at, even if it's not possible, to be able to rent it to a wider audience of people? Like an AAU team that, you know, or just a basketball team that wants to practice over the summer? Or whatnot, there's no mechanism for that, because you have to be under an umbrella agency that has an appropriate insurance policy, so maybe from a legal perspective.
I think our lawyers would tell us not to do that. But, but there's the difference between an individual and then some of those other examples that you had though too.
And I'm just going to pin that for, in terms of our agenda tonight, and circle back to something Jeff said, which is, in our discussions, we, the three of us, Jeff, Jenny, and I realized that there is a lot to this that we think is due for a more thorough review. I mean, there are three policies in our policy book that haven't been touched since that infamous April twenty-two thousand and one date, that sort of relate to, like, that haven't been updated to reflect our practices. So we've been talking about like, is it, would it be like a goal in next year's finance subcommittee? Is there some sort of working group to like merge what's happening with Jeff Bunyan's facilities and stuff like that, so that, I think there is a bigger discussion that will play out next year.
And just to give some background on that, the policy subcommittee, a couple of years ago, were very aware that the policies needed updating.
Yeah.
And at the time, the idea was, we knew we were kind of putting a bit more structure in place regarding the rentals and the coordinator, and so it kind of, we paused it, knowing that.
Here's this, here's time for us to review it.
To review it and figure out what works, with that in mind.
Great. Anything else? Oh, and I just, the other note I had in my mind was, you can see the evidence of that in tonight's budget transfers.
Yeah.
Right, like there was, there's, monies moved from other line items to go towards maintenance, so it's not a secret or surprise.
We have to move the budget from the salary line to cover the facility's deficit.
Great, thank you so much, Jenny, thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, have a good night.
Okay, so we'll circle back to that on June ninth, which apparently will be an infinite agenda. Next up is our policy review for P five-three-two-seven timeout spaces. And before I forget, I'm going to ask for a motion to waive the second reading of P five-three-two-seven.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor of waiving the reading? Thank you. Okay, discussion, please.
It is what it is at this point. I sent everybody a kind of a cleaner, updated version today, and went into the packet as well with the various kind of notes that we had had in our last discussion. So we changed the like title from parental consent to required documentation. And we put in the calendar, like the school days as opposed to the calendar days. And I changed the, oh no, that was the other thing, yeah. So outside of some typos or something that may still be there, which policy will definitely catch, this largely stays unchanged from our initial draft. And really, it's just if we are ready to approve it in terms of the spirit of the policy and what it means, I know Gerard's not here tonight, but Gerard is, has seen this and has, is in support of where we've landed in terms of implementing this across the district next year. Not that it's not already happening, but it's just kind of, what's the word? Formalizing, I think, and, and to also help bring a consistency across all the school buildings.
Any other feedback from committee members, follow-ups on previous discussions?
You got something, Chris?
Courtney saw this, her keen eyes.
Yep.
You want to talk about that?
Sure, the, the reference to safety care training.
Yeah.
We don't, I mean, there's only a select group of people who are safety care trained.
Yeah.
And they might not necessarily be the ones that are dealing with a timeout space. The safety care training does two separate things as far as de-escalation, and then, you know, if it moved into any kind of a physical restraint or a hold.
Yeah.
Which is much different than the use of the timeout space. And so I'm not sure if all those staff would be available. Some of our safety care-trained people are gen ed teachers, administrators, who are, you know, in the classroom and are called out when there is a need for that. It's not somebody who can monitor a timeout space. There could be somebody in a reach classroom.
I, I think that was the spares of it, because we did specifically talk about this in the policy meeting with Gerard, and the idea being that if these are, rooms are connected to a specific program, that the staff who are, or the leader of that program should also have this safety care training.
It's, it's also just a concern that safety care is trademarked.
Right.
So we've gone back and forth as to de-escalation training.
So if I just take, change that kind of. Right, so safety care is definitely a certification that we moved to several years ago after using CPI.
Yep.
And then knowing that the, the cost is quite significant.
Yeah.
And the time needed for all of the certifications, so what we've been doing is doing a de-escalation training, which takes out many of our staff members. As some of you might remember, we did it for our principal assistants, we did it for, you know, many different ESPs. It takes us all the way up to a hold. Because we don't want anybody holding a student unless they are safety care trained.
Yeah.
But all of that de-escalation training is something different that we don't trademark as safety care specialist.
Yeah, so we could, I mean, certainly change it to like appropriate training or something. I mean, basically what it has to solidify is that the staff who are managing these spaces are appropriately trained to use these spaces. I think that's, that was the, the point behind it, as opposed to that safety care trademarked program.
I think that alone, saying that the.
Appropriately trained would be helpful.
Yeah, appropriately trained.
Yeah, we can, if the committee are.
Agreed.
I'm seeing head nods, so I would call that consensus.
And I would always avoid trademarked programs that we don't want to lock in the district to using one.
Yep.
One thing.
Absolutely do that.
Any final feedback or discussion? Shayna's on her roll.
Motion to approve with a slight edit.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Thank you, Shayna and Valerie.
Are there like awards that people get, or like?
Yes. Yeah, we do a recognition night of how.
It just means that I get.
There's a tally.
I haven't been paying attention.
The second worst assignment, next to Jessica.
Those people are paying more.
We start picking out of the hat.
Um, okay, all in favor? Okay, five three two seven approved. Okay, we are on to our last order of business tonight, which is a second reading and final discussion and vote for P six one one zero graduation requirements. And before we forget, let's do a, a motion to waive the second reading of P six one one zero.
So moved.
Second.
Who that?
Bill, Tom?
It was Tom.
I just heard a deep. Okay, Tom and Catherine with the second. Okay, all those in favor of waiving the reading, P six one zero one zero, thank you. And now we are at discussion. So we've, for anyone just tuning in, I don't know if there is anyone, but, um, you know, this is our fourth, uh, meeting that this has been on the agenda. Um, as follow-up from a working group recommendation in December. Um, it's been through the policy subcommittee several times. Um, I think we all articulated our initial thoughts at our last meeting. Um, so feel free to open it up. Um, did, was there anything?
I just wanted to note one or two changes as well.
Yep.
From, from that, it was only some word tweaking, um, that I did on it with the clean version I sent today. Um, and instead of putting, calling it the annual review, I just put the heading for a program of studies specifically talking about that.
Mm-huh.
Um, and then, um, yeah, those were the only kind of tweaks, a few commas and things in between. But again, the spirit of it is.
There you are.
Yep.
Are you looking for it?
I'm looking for it, I'm not finding, why am I not finding it?
I did want to borrow the bottom of the drive if you're in the.
No. I did want to kind of just throw out there, as I like to do. Um, the last night's discussion kind of really sat with me for a number of days as I kind of processed it going, gosh, this feels like very complex in some ways in terms of the conversation and where we had ended up. Um, and I, I think Jess, some of what you had said kind of resonated with me. And so, um, you know, I'm kind of wondering, um, if we can kind of look at separating the two conversations, um, regarding this graduation policy. Because I know we've, we've got two somewhat proposed amendments. One is that coming, the P E health that came out of the working group with the recommendations with Dan and, and the W A working group and that Tom was a member of. And then the other conversation that had cropped up as this had gone on, um, Laurie, you had raised about the, the V P A. And I think the V P A for me kind of, you know, speaks to a wider discussion and wasn't necessarily connected to what we were kind of initially looking at was that flexibility in, in, in that P E kind of conversation that, um, that, uh, rose from conversations last year. So, um, I just wondered, do people have any thoughts about, you know, kind of pausing on the V P A conversation to become part of a wider conversation? I know Dan even on his SIP tonight was mentioning about, you know, looking at the program of studies and, you know, looking at kind of down the line in terms of scheduling and maybe more that six through twelve lens. And I know conversations are already happening around, um, kind of bringing a more equitable, um, kind of approach to that. And so I don't know if, if we, if it's easier for the committee. And I think that's what it was, I was trying to think of from the last night. Is it easier for the committee to kind of pause on one and just focus on what was that initial charge? And really why the graduation requirements policy kind of opened up in the first place? So I'm just throwing it out there.
I would add that we were talking about the V P A, uh, question as being something continued into next year.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Does anybody?
So, uh, I, I think that, uh, the, a couple things. Uh, first is, I think if we decouple, you know, and.
Unconscious decoupling, is that it or?
So, you know, not taking just what's in front of us right now and, and the V P A piece. If I remember correctly, the number was something like eighty percent of graduates this year.
Yep.
Would meet that, right, already.
Yep.
I do wonder if, you know, uh, to Gloria's comments earlier, if essentially adding that flexibility in would result in that eighty percent actually growing to ninety percent organically. And not being a requirement, but now those students are choosing to be there and thus elevating all those programs that much more because they want to be there. So that, that's the first thing. My other thought coming out of this is that if we, uh, adopt this proposal of reducing health and wellness, um, down to that health and wellness and not gym and not P E and, and health. We are asking and trusting our educators to come to us with, come to us, come to the community with a proposal of how that would look and how that would work. Uh, I think that would require talking across disciplines and asking what other subject matters are covering some of the things in the new standards, which I will say I have not looked at. Again, I'm trusting our professionals to do that. But I'm also expecting that if we task them with this, they're going to come back to us if it's not possible at all and say that, you know, these are the reasons that it cannot be achieved. Um, and then we would just, we would have to reevaluate basically, you know. But I, I'd be expecting a good faith effort to put the best program forward. Um, and recognizing the fact that it is a, a big ask. And it's, it's a trade-off one way or the other.
But are you asking for the reduction in phys and health and to be put on pause for more information to be collected? Or are we asking them to put their best foot forward and bring more information to us?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I think it's a chicken and the egg discussion really. You know, do, do we reduce it and, and ask for the, the redevelopment? And then if, if it's not possible, right, then, then we need to know that too. And, and I don't want to put our educators in, in a position that they can't achieve. Uh, but I think we need to make a decision and have a, a direction one way or the other.
And just to remind us that we're talking about the class of two thousand and thirty.
Yes.
This is not implemented next year.
Correct. Yep.
As I understand it, the curriculum coordinator was a part of the working group. So I would think that would have been flagged if it was not possible. Um, the other thing, Catherine, if I, I, tell me if I'm looking at this wrong. I actually don't see the V P A requirement at all on the table.
Oh, is that why my math's not adding up?
Oh, you know.
Am I, like, did you use your really smart brain because my math is not adding up? I'm adding a hundred and fifteen, I'm two and a half short.
Good catch.
Twelve.
Yeah, no, it's, I, because we, we don't actually touch the, the real one. So as I copied and pasted, I had problems with the table coming over, so I, good catch.
Going insane because that math is not adding up.
I said, I knew, I, I knew there was going to be, and I went through it, yeah, okay. So that will go back.
We're not eliminating V P A.
Sorry, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
No, we had problem with formatting on the table when I copied and pasted. Um, so, yes, good catch. That's not the original, the final document as it is, it would be drafted, yeah.
I just didn't want to sound like an idiot when I spoke up and was like, I don't think the math adds up.
Any other thoughts to share?
So I took a lot away from the student survey that was developed by the grad requirements work group. Uh, went back through the numbers, um, and looked at it a little bit with a closer lens. There were three hundred and fifty-six students that responded. They represented about thirty-three percent of the sophomore, junior and senior classes. When asked what those, uh, subject requirements they would decrease, there were six hundred and nine responses, meaning that a majority of students chose multiple subject areas to decrease. Of those six hundred and nine responses, two hundred and fifteen or thirty-five percent, uh, would decrease phys ed and health, while three hundred and ninety-four or sixty-five percent would decrease subjects other than phys ed or health or not decrease any subjects at all. Uh, when asked what subject requirements they would increase, almost half responded stated they wanted no change to increasing requirements. Um, I believe this, these responses validate what is an academically rigorous curriculum for students to learn and grow, but also acknowledges the high-pressure environment, which I think we've, we've talked about a few times tonight that exists at W A and across the district, I would say, and, and other spots too. Um, freshmen weren't surveyed, um, in any manner in this group. Um, and I just find that interesting because we were talking about this discussion only affecting future class, freshman classes. Um, we've had a number of recent public comments talking about academic support and specifically students on I E Ps. Um, and I think there's a greater issue here about serving students on I E Ps and their course schedules that, that don't necessarily have to do with freshman year phys ed and health or a combined phys ed health. I think there's a larger equity issue at stake that deserves more attention and more discussion, um, across a lot of district partners. But it's my opinion that right now, given the standards, giving what, um, you know, a twenty percent reduction in structural time, what we're proposing, um, would ask our teachers to take on more, supporting more students, more high need, high need students in each section, um, with less time to cover more objectives and topics. Um, the stressors that we've already talked about, academic, social, emotional, behavioral, physical health stressors, uh, some of the arenas we talked about tonight, social media, smartphones, A I, other technologies, um, what we envision the Westford graduate to be. Um, I would be, I'm a proponent right now of pausing this, uh, for further discussion. We, the governors has tasked a statewide K to twelve graduation council that's supposed to be coming out with new graduation requirements, a report, hopefully by July of next year. Um, I think we could glean a lot of that for, uh, a topic for the future, but that's kind of how I stand right now, so.
Anyone else want to share their thoughts?
I think, I mean, I know.
I don't know if you could see from that area.
Oh, I couldn't, sorry, you, Jess, you go first.
Well, I, I was just going to highlight, um, you know, especially tonight, how much we heard student choice lifted up as being important in so many other aspects of, um, what we're doing. Uh, you know, we had that wonderful presentation from our students and, uh, you know, just really taking to heart this idea that choice is important. And so that resonates a lot with me. It seems like it's something we really value and I think it helps to address the, um, you know, equity issues that we've talked about regarding special education. But it also helps with mental health and it helps students be able to be those strong, you know, advocates for themselves that we want after Westford Academy, learning how to choose and live with your choices is a very important skill. Um, I, I also, you know, agree that the student surveys had a big impact on me too, although I think I was looking at them a little bit differently. But for me, what I took away is that, you know, especially as being a teacher, a classroom teacher for high schoolers too, you know, students often know what they need. We, we just need to listen. And I think they were being very clear about what they, what they need. I read some of the ghostwriter articles about this and of course all the public comment that's come in. So, uh, you know, to me, that's where I stand. I think we do need to think about some cultural shifts around reducing pressure, you know, for our students for sure. I think there are other levers that we need to look at and the G P A weighting is a great way to do that. Um, but, yeah, I'd said, those are my thoughts.
Yep. The one thing that stood out for me just today that, I mean, and, and really what we're talking about is two and a half elective. So it's not something that we're changing, you know, drama, like a dramatic increase across the way. We, we got an email through today, um, in, um, on a number of emails and various comments. But there was one that stood out to me of a parent sharing that their student had dropped their I E P in freshman year because to them theater was kind of the only reason to go to school.
Dropped their academic support.
Sorry, they dropped their, well, they dropped their I E P and, and academic support.
Yeah.
Um, came off the I E P.
Yes.
Um.
Yep.
In order to take the world language and, and to keep up, to keep up theater.
Yep.
And that for me, I kind of have to say, I, I, that a student would go ahead and make that choice in, in ninth grade, um, kind of really resonated with, I think, the, the various stories and conversations I, I have had in, in recent years. Um, and, and for me, like you said Jess, with kind of that student's voice and choice, um, I, I very much think that combining that one elective, um, I think just changes a lot of flexibility and brings a bit more choice in, in for our students in, in that freshman year. And try and improves our equity as we do a bigger deep dive, you know, over the coming years in terms of those, um, the other scheduling and stuff, so, um, yeah.
And a similar story we heard tonight of someone who, really, their orchestra was really their happy place.
Happy place.
And they couldn't do it without some flexibility in the schedule.
Yeah.
In ninth grade.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think those are the really, you know, sometimes we get, um, a, a push of emails it, related to a topic. But what struck me in the, our recent emails is the personal anecdotes and the personal experiences that were shared. Um, and just like, without having a high schooler myself, those really resonated to see what students are making for those trade-offs. Um, you know, when I think about like the statewide group that's looking at this, um, I, I think some of the research we've had from a parent showing what our, um, our, our DART districts and our, our geographical adjacent districts are doing. Um, and thinking about the changes that have happened in the last couple of years to reduce some of the flexibility, um, for, for good reasons. But I think have had some trickle-down unintended consequences. And this feels like a choice that is within our purview to, um, sort of mitigate some of those unintended consequences that, that we've, um, seen affect student choice and student schedules. So, um, I would also support, um, this idea of thinking about what's in front of us right now that was vetted through a working group and, um, and thinking about P E in front of us right now. Um, you know, some of the things in the W A SIP about, um, I'm blanking on the words, but like, I think ma, in making next, as we create the next three-year S D I P, I think a lot of those things that we're all hinting at and we're all wrestling with are going to come up as a bigger conversation. Um, but I think this is, uh, a, a moderate response that has been recommended to us, vetted to us and, um, feels measured compared to the, the changes that have happened that have reduced some of that flexibility. Shayna, have you?
I, I have thought a lot about this the past two weeks. And I have like flipped up myself back and forth so many times. Um, I think obviously we've heard some feedback from the community. Um, I think I had definitely expressed some concern about that, what a student might pick up in that spot. Um, thinking through a little bit more about it being more ninth grade focused versus further down in their high school career makes me feel a little less concerned, I guess, because I think maybe not knowing as much when you're coming in ninth grade versus maybe trying to pull something in, you know, and tenth or eleventh grade to boost a G P A or to, to whatnot might be a difference. Um, I think it would be great as we're thinking through some changes in course study and changes in G P A to maybe keep this as like another data set. If we moved this forward today to start looking at like, what did that, what has changed in ninth grade enrollments? Like where can we track that students are kind of using this extra two, two and a half credits if this goes through today? Um, so that we can have better data to either negate or conform nor, nor deny that we're, we're not using this in a, in a capacity that is adding some of that extra burden. I think Tom was. I think Tom was just saying that maybe they will use it in a VPA and that will further some of our VPA statistics. So I think that if we move it forward, I I personally would be really interested in seeing, even after the first class comes through, like, what did we pick, what did we use this for, what are we seeing as changes in the previous classes versus this classes? Um, and do we want to revisit something or make some guidelines or add in the VPA or or whatnot? So I think after I sat on it for a little bit and kind of really thought about it from a ninth grade lens, um, and then how the incoming eighth graders, right, are impacted if they're on IEPs and stuff and how it has that direct correlation between the eighth and ninth grade. It started to to sway me um, one day or another um, in in one way. And so I think just be mindful of that, but I do also agree that coming up with a better equitable situation when it comes to course scheduling for students that are on IEPs should be a larger part of a broader conversation too.
Anyone else?
Me.
Laurie, did you have a chance to stick up?
Yeah, I I agree especially about the equity piece with the the kids on IEPs coming from the middle school to the high school where their choices are limited, that really needs to be looked at as well as uh, the VPA increase according to the mass score.
Hmm, yeah.
And it it seems like this conversation this year has been pretty much focused on PE health. It it felt like that's what came out of the committee.
The committee, I think the the working group was asked to look at the graduation requirements holistically.
Okay.
Right, and we had asked to look to see, was there any flexibility? And I mean, I know Tom is here and Principal Toomey is here too that could could speak to it. Um, this is, that is where they found an opportunity for flexibility that seemed to s, to make the most sense and was not a, was not a massive shift or change. But the conversations that were taking place during the budget season, there were a lot of people asking questions about are there other ways in which we, students could be getting their PE credit? So that's why it seems like sometimes that they're blended, but the committee actually just went to look at the graduation requirements as a whole. And that's kind of their presentation showed that they didn't go into it looking to see, can they reduce any one specific department?
No, I understand that, but I think there were, there was a lot of feedback from the community too. Um, at least this year that I that I heard about concern about a lack of flexibility in that area in particular for for students.
Yep.
Yep.
Need to take a vote?
Yeah. But yeah, I I'm not seeing anyone, I mean, we're either ready for a motion or others have more discussion? You can always, uh, there can always be a motion and a second and and a final thought.
And I just want to share one more thing, and and this is kind of, I was having a discussion with the parent of a current senior the other day. And they were talking about the the decision between two schools that they ended up coming to, and it was like, one day it was won, the next day, so. And and I found myself kind of in that, kind of going back and forth. Um, we've heard from parents, we've heard from students over the past couple of years, we've heard from our educators. All have very valid perspectives. I think, I think we need to, my perspective right now is we need to make a decision tonight so that everyone knows what we're going forward with. And we're going to have to live with that dec- decision one way or the other for a period of time.
Yep, and I, I don't, I don't think it ends here.
No, and that that's thing is.
We've, we've, in even in this policy, there's discussion about program of studies and we've heard that in the SIPs. So I don't see it as like, this topic isn't
No.
A stranger to our agenda.
Right, no, 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 and and I'm not saying we have to live with it for the next twenty years.
No.
Um, but whatever we decide, we're committing to as our path forward, right? And that that's our direction um, for for the district, and in this case for WA. But that's, I think that's how we're going to serve this the community today, is to decide on that direction. And it may not be unanimous vote, uh, I have a funny feeling it's not going to be, and that's okay. Uh, because the community is not unanimous on it and and that's kind of, I I think we have to be okay with that.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Anybody like to take a stab at a motion?
Motion to approve the policy, but make sure we add in VPA to the table?
Yeah. With the amendments.
The amended policy.
As amended.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, last call, final words. All in favor of approving P six one one zero draft as amended, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Any abstained? Nope, okay, six one, okay. Great discussions, um, you know, like I said, I think it will be a larger um, thing that we will continue to unpack and um, we will move forward uh, from there. I will take a motion to adjourn, that is our last bid, order of business tonight.
So moved.
Yep.
That's again.
Who was that Shayna?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning? That is unanimous.
Is it a full point? Like, is it a full point, like you might?